That was a Christmas present.
Borgang.
I like the black with the silver.
I know, it's very, very cool.
I just always say hi, Donna.
Yeah. There you go.
Yeah.
That's why I got.
They needed two anyways, right?
I got contacts for the first time in my life.
Three, yeah.
Because of that.
Wow, how do you like them?
I really like them. I got them about six months ago.
Okay.
There's so many openings on most of the boards that I serve on.
I have to wear a mask all day, so.
Makes sense. I mean, people have just kind of.
Hey, do you have the presentation?
They need to.
How are you?
Come back. Yeah.
Come on back. Right. Reminder, we need you still.
Come back.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Okay. Hi, Anne.
Okay. We're going to call to order the Ritter Regular City Council meeting of January 24th, 2022. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson.
Here.
Salvia.
Here.
Albrecht.
Here.
Gould.
Here.
Harrison.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Sage.
Here.
Thank you. Will you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, everybody, thank you for coming out on this snowy, cold winter night. But the business of the city continues on. Also, I'd just like to congratulate our city manager, who had a baby boy yesterday. So congratulations to Blaine Wing, and we have Assistant City Manager Nick Banda, who is on the camera, who is filling in for him tonight. Um, so congratulations to Blaine. So first, we have public comments, scheduled and non-scheduled presentations. Um, we'll first start with the annual library report. And we have our liaison here, and Julianne from the, um, library, so come on up, welcome. Thank you for coming out on this cold night.
Thank you so much for having us. We are so happy to be here. For those of you that haven't had a chance to meet Alice Newt, this is Alice. She is our new library liaison for the city of Rochester. She was appointed, I believe, in November and began her term in December, so we're so thrilled to have her. I'll be doing the majority of the presentation, and we'll keep it to five minutes or less. And then Alice is going to provide some statistics that give you a snapshot view of how we performed over the last, last year. So if we can begin with the slides. Um, the piece that I want to highlight for you this year is that we began a very ambitious strategic plan in 2021. Can we advance to the next slide?
Are you seeing the populations we serve slide?
No. Is there something I can do to enable?
No.
Next slide, Brian, if you could.
He needs to enable.
It needs enabling.
Enable and then presentation mode.
Uh, I've got it up on mine. Just give me one second.
There you go.
There we go. Thank you so much.
It's still not in presentation.
Then go into.
So you should have a copy of this in your board packet.
Yes, yes, we do.
Yep. And you also have a review of, um, all of the strategic plan that we completed in 2021. So again, what I'm trying to do here is just set the stage. Um, having a captive audience like yours, it's helpful for us just to set a reminder of all the populations we serve and everything that we get that gets baked into our strategic planning process. So we have early learners, students, job and social benefit seekers, seniors, small and independent businesses, educators, administrators, new citizens, community partners, people living with disabilities, parents, story lovers, researchers, hobbyists. What I like to say is that we serve five generations of users all at the same time. Not that many entities and not that many cultural institutions can actually lay claim to that. So again, we're the greatest generation. We serve, uh, baby boomers, Gen X, millennials, Gen Z, and I don't think they've named the newest babies yet, but we will serve them too. Next slide, please. Oh, boy. So some of the things we offer. When trying to figure out exactly what lane we need to be in as your public library and what we're going to commit to in our strategic plan, we had to do an audit of what we do differently than anybody else and what are the things that set us apart. So we've got ingenuity in our Eureka Lab and our Maker Space. We have a variety of spaces, those that you can use in a communal sense or even in more of a private sense. Nine study rooms, a quiet study room, two community meeting rooms, a large multipurpose room that seats 180. We have an amazing technology lineup, free Wi-Fi, and that's both in our building, on our campus, and in all of our bookmobiles. So even if you're out in the community at large, if you're within that radius, you're going to get access to Wi-Fi. We have computers, printers, copiers, digitizers, scanners. Accessibility is very big for us because we are the county seat for the Oakland Talking Book Service. So we have software, mobility scooters, magnifiers, like I said, a community bookmobile, our drive-through service, our mini branches in retirement residences, and our senior center. We have local history, where we've got digitized archives and artifacts. And we're a big proponents of family learning, so that intergenerational learning that happens with our infant play scape, play-based learning, family play training, early literacy bookmobile, and more. We have a variety of volunteer opportunities, so trying to find that niche for our friends of RHPL, and also workforce development. So we work with a variety of agencies, specifically those individuals living with cognitive disabilities, in figuring out ways that we can give them career and life readiness skills through the library. And our location, it cannot be beat. We're in the heart of downtown. I think we're a gem in the community, especially the backside of our library. And I think most of you know this, all of our grounds are maintained by gardeners, many of whom are master gardeners. So it's just a phenomenal place. Next slide. So to summarize, the Board of Trustees decided on what our purpose is and is going to be on a rolling, uh, three-year strategic plan. So these five things, we have set out to do better than anyone else in our community. And I don't mean that in a competitive sense. I simply mean to sharpen our focus and say, what lane are we going to be in? And are we going to lay claim to? Inspire lifelong learners, nurture developing minds, advocate critical thinking, foster community collaboration, and provide a welcoming space for enjoyment and discovery. Next slide. All of these are encapsulated in our strategic plan. Those purpose, those five purpose statements I had are codified by the Vor- Board. As your executive director, I set the vision, and then our managers and frontline team members establish what our focus is going to be and our, our, uh, action plan. And again, in your council packet, you have that, um, itemized for year one of how we accomplished it over this last year. If anyone cares to read more about it, it is posted on our website, and you would be able to, to read up on it there. Next slide, I'm just going to highlight some of our major goals or ma- major accomplishments in 2021. So nervous, new services and collections. We rebooted our books by mail program. We expanded eligibility for those individuals who don't want to physically come into the library. This is a very unique opportunity where we can actually mail books to them. We developed an online reservation system for our three meeting rooms and nine study rooms. Again, meeting our patrons with how they expect to experience a modern library. The idea of booking reservations online, canceling them, rebooking, whatever they want to do, we want to make it very easy for them. We upgraded all of our public printers and scanners. We expanded our outreach to schools. We added something called the Buzz Reads collection on the second floor. And we launched innovative items, which is a circulating collection of equipment and tools, which is based on experience-based learning, so learning by doing, uh, skill building and workforce development as well. Next slide. We took advantage of the fact that our foot traffic was a bit lower during the pandemic, and we took stock of what needed to happen in the facilities. We are, you know, encroaching on 30 years old for that building. So some of the things that we embarked upon, we're renovating and refreshing the public bathrooms with our touchless fixture, fixtures and modern finishes. We converted two rooms into new conference rooms, added new indoor plants. I know it's small, but it actually helps tremendously with just the ambiance and fresh air. We rearranged and enhanced a dedicated quiet room with our computers and soft seating, enhanced outside spaces with fresh landscaping and native plants. You've got to believe, I had Rochester pollinators working with me on that one because they are big in this community. We installed new bottle filling stations and refurbished our social seating area, streamlined our public service desks, and rebooted the Eureka Lab for a new, larger space. Next slide. So what's coming on the horizon? This is always sort of the big new, what's, what's, what's headed, uh, what's ahead of us? West parking lot improvements. This is going to be a big one. We completed some very basic upgrades to the south lot in, uh, the month of November and December. And now we are embarking on a full rebuild for the west lot. Um, this is going to take a lot of coordination. I've been working with city manager Blaine Wing extensively, so he's very aware of when this will happen. It's slated for May right now, um, and we hope to be on, on track with that. We have established a capital replacement schedule so that we don't have huge hits to our budget on any one year. This evens it out and makes it a lot flatter for us to plan and predict various things that need to be implemented and, and, uh, expensed in a, in a fiscal year. We have our biennial community survey, so every other year, we query our patrons. This will be going out in March, so we love to get feedback from our community at large on how we're doing from a satisfaction and what we want to hear from them in terms of what they need from us. We have a plan to develop a sustainable plan for mobile library services. We do have an aging bookmobile, and I'm eager to see what, um, what we can come up with to come up with a more sustainable plan for that. We're going to explore going fine-free. This is a trend in pu- public libraries. It doesn't mean that you'd be off the hook for paying for your books if you lose them or if you damage them ultimately. It just means we would explore going away with the daily fine. We are of course going to keep a watchful eye on grants, budget, and rebuilding our fund balance. Next. One of the important things that we're going to be looking to is, is working with our county, Oakland County, to renew the OTBS contract. I touched on this a little bit. It stands for Oakland Talking Book Service. It provides dedicated outreach and attention to individuals who are living with vision impairment or physical disabilities. And, um, we feel very honored that we were selected by Oakland County 10 years ago. We are the largest library in Oakland County, so it was a natural pairing. And this was an example where they outsourced a service that they just didn't feel that they were executing very well. They moved it to us because we're open more than 70 hours a week, and we've been able to do, um, tremendous outreach as a result. Next slide. So as I bring things to a close, what I want to focus on is that to be a trusted organization, especially in this polarized environment in which we are all, um, living and working, I want to share with you the fact that I think three things matter when it comes to the public library. We're committed to financial transparency, being future-proof, and defending the freedom to read. I think these are going to be important things in 2022 and beyond. So when I talk about financial transparency, I'm alluding to the fact that we have put a variety of documents on our website that hadn't been there before. So the idea of our full board packet, again, this is probably common practice. It's been part of your, uh, you know, standard way of doing business for quite some time, but it hadn't been a practice that we were accustomed to. Um, so full transparency, you can see anything as it relates to our budget, our audited statements, anything coming into the future as it relates to fiscal. Um, our military, this is one of those things that I actually like to talk about quite a bit because we have a really good military, meaning the investment that tax sellers make, that taxpayers make in our library system, um, comes back in, in a tremendous way for the caliber of library that we get. I aggressively go after grants and donations. So again, working with Blaine, uh, he knows that not only are we pursuing some, uh, electric vehicle charging stations for our new parking lot, we're actually looking to that as a way of replacing our bookmobile and getting creative with some of the grants that might be coming down the pike there. Future-proof, I often have to answer the question, how are libraries able to survive and thrive in an internet age? And I often say, it's knowing your why, but it's also knowing your how. How do your patrons today want to experience a public library? So that community survey I talked to you about, that's actually going to play a critical role in making sure we're solving the right problems moving forward. And finally, the freedom to read. This is an important tenet of our profession, and it's something that I'm going to stand up for, um, uh, as, as frequently as I can talk about it, basically. The idea that we are inclusive for all, that we promote First Amendment rights, and we defend any attempts to censor. We are here for you in terms of fighting misinformation, and we trust our individuals and our parents to make good decisions regarding their personal reading choices. So with that, I think I've come to a close. And I want to hand it over to Alice just to point out some of our statistics, and then we will let you continue with your meeting.
I get the short and sweet version of it. Is there another slide?
I don't think so.
Okay. So I, I have, I hold the slides here.
Yeah.
I have the 2021 annual report. So there's a lot of numbers, but, um, cardholders, 67,000 plus. Um, annual visitors this year is already 233,000. It averages out to about 700 visitors a day, and that's even including being closed the month of January last year and not even having seating or modified seating in the library until July. So that's amazing that so many people came through. Total circulation was even up from the previous year. It was 1.5 million, 1.4 million, very close to a pre-pandemic circulation of 1.5. So a lot of that is also, um, the bookmobile has increased circulation this year as well. So that's something very important that we would want to continue, and also ebooks, e-material circulation, ebooks, audiobooks. Um, adult and teen program attendance is up 1,000 from the year before. So people are coming back to the library. People really want to utilize the library. Computer reservations are up, volunteer numbers are up, and the youth program attendance is up. So everybody's eager to get back to what they're used to and coming to just attend all the programs that are available. Um, so those are the numbers, but I know there's a whole page over here of our 2021 donors, but I don't have time to read all of them because it's a really, really fine print list. But we do thank all the donors from the community. We thank them for their faithful support throughout the past two years.
Through your support, is there anything we can answer?
Any questions? Councilmember Robert.
Uh, thank you both for your great presentation. It was great to read all the materials that you sent in advance. You mentioned that you work with Blaine on a lot of things. I'm imagining you also work with Rochester Hills, Brian Barnett, and other community leaders.
Yes, certainly, because we serve the three communities of Rochester Hills, sorry, Rochester Hills, Oakland Township, and the city of Rochester. I tend to work most with Blaine on facilities issues because of course we're seated in, in this municipality. But, um, you know, for better or for worse, the pandemic has been a wonderful catalyst for a newer director like myself getting to know key municipal players. So I certainly count our friends, uh, both in the mayor's office and at City Hall, um, in Rochester Hills as being among, um, our supporters as well.
Thanks, Julianne. Any further, uh, uh, councilmember Harrison?
Thank you. Thank you, Julianne, um, for the wonderful presentation. I appreciate you both being here. I'm wondering, is the Friends Annual Wine Witten Wisdom Fundraiser going to be returning this year?
It is. Thank you for asking that. Um, that is returning on April 30th, so we are planning for an in-person event. So please mark your calendars. We are hoping that we can carry it off with minimal, um, uh, you know, ramifications as it relates to COVID. We're going to go ahead with, uh, best in-person plans possible, and I'll make a small plug. We do have a used book sale coming up this next week, so if used book sales are your, uh, flavor, uh, we have one coming up this week on Wednesday.
Thank you.
Further questions? Councilmember Sage.
Thank you, Mr. Murray, and thank you, Julianne and Alice, for, uh, sharing some information with us. Um, you mentioned one of the priorities being local history and, uh, particular digitized archives. So I apologize, I don't know this. Uh, do you have access to a lot of the Rochester Hills Museum at Van Huseen, uh, their archives a- as well as the Avon Historical Society's archives?
So, um, when I talk about online access, we have access to something called Oakland County Historical Records, OCHR. It's actually a group of libraries and institutions around Oakland County that have contributed to this, um, wonderful resource, this wonderful database. Um, it ranges in, in, uh, you know, resources from the postcard collection that we have to modern-day photography that we are trying to capture and preserve. So while I don't, I want to be very clear in that the museum is a wonderful community organization. We don't seek to replicate what's happening already at the museum. We want to be a complement to that. And I think the best way we have figured out how to do that is through this online database and having various, um, electronic and digitized versions of, uh, beloved local records in that regard.
Thank you. Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I'd just like to make a comment for the gentleman who, who just came in. We are asking very respectfully that people wear masks tonight, and there are masks up here if, um, you would choose to do that. Thank you.
So if you're asking respectfully, respectfully say no?
Um, I don't know. Chief? Call your chief.
We would like for you to put a mask on, please, whether you're vaccinated or not.
So if you're asking, am I allowed to say no respectfully?
Um, I guess, I guess we'd like you to put a mask on. So I guess if you won't put a mask on, then you probably need to leave.
You're saying I cannot say no, so you're not asking me, you're telling me to put a mask on?
I'm asking you very respectfully to do that.
You're trying me, but okay.
Thank you. I appreciate that very much.
Try to be honest, please, please.
Okay, next we have an update from Representative, State Representative Mark Tisdale. Mr. Tisdale, welcome to our city council tonight.
Very good, and thank you for having me. I have to follow Julianne's professional presentation.
It's very difficult.
I might break into some interpretive dance to make this more interesting. But basically, I've, I've just completed my first year, uh, in Lansing. It's a great job. Uh, I appreciate very much being, being elected from this area. There's been a lot of talk about redistricting. What is now the 45th district will become the 55th district. Very little changes. I lose two precincts in southwest Oakland Township and pick up one precinct in southeast. That's the extent of it. One of the four principles in the Constitution about redistricting was, uh, communities of interest and with the inter-local agreements, uh, uh, one school district, uh, the Paint Creek Trail, Clinton River watershed, all of those, you know, things. It was very apparent that Rochester and Rochester Hills needed to stay together. And there are some communities, I think Bloomfield Township might be carved up into five different districts. So we're very, we're very fortunate here and, uh, very, very glad that everything's intact and, uh, hopefully I'll be reelected in, uh, 2022. Uh, there's been a lot of talk in the state. It started with the, really, uh, what was stated as little or no opportunity to, to have won the, the Ford, uh, Assembly, uh, Electronic Vehicle Assembly and Battery Assembly plants that went into, um, Kentucky and Tennessee. At the end of the, uh, of, of the last year, we passed a three-bill package, uh, uh, in the House and Senate, and it was signed into law, a SOAR fund, which is the Strategic Outreach and Attraction Reserve Fund. Um, there was a strategic site readiness fund. And that's important because if you look at, if you look at Kentucky and Tennessee, they've won that, that, you know, the, the expansion of Ford, significant, uh, 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 expansion of the Ford Assembly and Battery Facility down there. They've been working for nearly a decade on those sites that were out in the middle of nowhere. They put in all the infrastructure, the roads, the sewers, the water lines, the electricity. So it was relatively turnkey, and they had spent tens of millions of dollars just on some of that basic infrastructure. And we just didn't have anything like that in Michigan. And I don't think we had parcels of, of land large enough, uh, adjacent to rail, highway, and air, air freight systems or facilities. Um, so we've, we've got some work cut out for us there. Tomorrow, GM and LG will announce an expansion of their, uh, their electronic vehicle and battery, uh, facilities. LG has a facility over in Holland. Um, they're making EVs in the Orion Assembly Plant, uh, just, just west of here. And I, and I think they're going to be adding, uh, facilities in, in Ingham County. And so, uh, GE will be making a significant investment here. But again, it's, it's, it's absolutely necessary that we stay on top of these opportunities. Uh, you know, with, uh, companies around the country. Uh, Ohio, Governor DeWine on Christmas Day, uh, received a letter, uh, from Intel that they're going to be building facilities down near Columbus, Ohio. Um, in order to do that, very quick turnaround, uh, they committed up to $3 billion. Those facilities are going to bring in over 3,000 new jobs with an average income of $135,000 a year. So that's a, that's a significant opportunity down there, very close to Ohio State University, obviously, in the Columbus area. And, and it was also noted that one of the things that, that drew their attention is that, uh, uh, Microsoft, Google, and Amazon already had, um, a presence in Ohio. We have some of that here in Michigan as well, so hopefully that works to our advantage. One of the things that captures my attention on this whole development, uh, and the, the, the inconsistency between, um, where we're ranked in, in business readiness, labor, labor force supply relative to our, our quality of life. American Enterprise Institute just came out with a study, ranked us 37th overall in, 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 um, business, uh, facilitation, so to speak. We're ranked 44th in labor supply, um, but 13th in quality of life. And we've been stuck at 10 million population since, uh, 1980. You know, that's forty, over, over four decades. And we're, we're in the top 10 outbound states for population still. We're, we're ranked number 10. Uh, but when you, when you look at Michigan and some of its, again, some of its metrics relative to the average for, for the top 10 inbound states, our, uh, corporate, uh, income tax is 34% higher than that average. Some states don't have a corporate income tax. Uh, uh, our, our electricity was, I believe, 46% higher than those 10 inbound states. So we've got some work to do here. Um, and again, when we're the, when we're ranked 13th in the, in the nation in quality of life, yet we can't seem to attract or retain population. Um, uh, we, we need to, we need to, to take a, a real serious, long look at why. I, I'm fortunate to sit on four very good committees. I'm Vice Chair of the Tax Policy Committee. I sit on insurance, health policy, and families, children, and seniors. So really, the four, the four committees that I sit on touch virtually everyone in the state. And as a result, um, uh, w- once the interest groups and lobbyists get to know what committees you're on, then they start to look at you, is this a person that can, that can, that can introduce and carry our legislation through? Um, I had five bills passed the House this year. Two of them signed into law at the end of the year, a, a tax cut for small business and a tax form simplification, uh, uh, a bill for, uh, uh, for manufacturers with exempt, uh, equipment exempted from the personal property tax. That, that happened back in 2012. Got another 14 bills, um, pending, so I feel very fortunate that I've been able to attract enough positive attention that people have been coming to me to, to represent their, uh, their legis- their legislation in, uh, on the House floor. And hopefully that translates into good things for, for Rochester and Rochester Hills. I've reached out a number of times, uh, to Mayor Bixson and to, uh, city manager, uh, Blaine Wing. I think the first time was, uh, the, the restriction or, uh, the removal of open carry in the Capitol. Uh, I'd like to say that, uh, your mayor and your city manager had no problem with that whatsoever. Uh, I think most recently was on the short-term rental, uh, legislation, and we went back and forth a couple of times on that. Uh, right, uh, you know, well into the, into the early morning hours. Um, uh, your city manager suggested I wait until the next day, uh, and, and he could bounce it off of the city attorney, Mr. Crete. But, uh, we were voting that night, and we were there till 2:00 in the morning, till enough votes came along to pass it. I remained a no, much to the disappointment of, uh, of caucus leadership. But, uh, Rochester, Rochester Hills personnel were just dead set against it. Not that we have a short-term rental prop- property issue here in either, uh, i- either of our, our communities, but it just felt like an erosion, further erosion of city powers. And, uh, having eight years in, in, in city government experience, I, I, I related and empathized with that very much, so. Open for questions?
Good questions, uh, Councilmember Sage.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Thank you, Representative Tisdale, for coming to, to speak with us. And you did mention something that was very interesting about Ohio's decision to take advantage of the $55 billion that the federal act for semiconductor assistance provided. I think that was in fourth quarter of, uh, last year. So given our, uh, allegiance and alliance with the big three here, are we considering that as a state, uh, to, to take advantage of some of that money? Because that is integral in securing and preserving stability of production for automobiles.
Well, first, I would say that, as you indicated, the turnaround speed that Ohio was able to put a lot of these things together was absolutely critical. Relative to the Kentucky and Tennessee operation, what we were told, caucus members, that leadership on both sides of the aisle was not advised that that was even a potential until three or four days before the board was going to announce that. So we have to do a much better job of working together with administration. All of those, quite often, all of those federal dollars require some kind of matching contribution on the state side as well. So we have to be willing to come up with those kinds of investments. And quite often, those can be met with concerns primarily from my side of the aisle that, you know, we're trying to pick winners and losers. This is the world as it is today. And we have to, you know, I'm not a fan of unilateral disarmament. And we have to play with the big boys if we're going to get these big deals. And again, this is one of the great states to live in. And when you look at work from home, one of the things I'd like to do is turn pure Michigan into, instead of coming here to fish, live here, work here. For a fraction of what it costs you to live downtown Chicago, you could have a house on the lake in St. Joe. So there are those kinds of opportunities. We've got probably, it's estimated, maybe $20 billion, $20 billion in federal dollars to spend. It looks like our surplus is actually higher than initially anticipated from the prior fiscal year, about $5 million. There's another $6 million in COVID relief and care dollars that are still out there. And it looks like there's going to be maybe $11 or $12 billion in infrastructure dollars. So there's, you'd think it would be easy to spend the money, but there's an awful lot of discussion on who's going to get what. Relative to some of those COVID dollars, I was very pleased to have my name put on the amendment that re-included and passed, that put the equalization dollars back in for better funded schools, more well-funded, well-off funded school districts. That was about $360 million in discretionary dollars in the series of elementary and secondary school relief bills. There were three of them. And that will bring about $1,093 per student into Rochester Community Schools. So that's about $15 million. So, but back to your question. We've developed that, the three funds on economic development that I created, that I discussed earlier, that requires the legislature to be involved. After forty years of sales experience, when heads are nodding in the room, you'd like to close the deal right away, that could be an additional time impediment, will slow the process down. But this isn't a private business. We have an obligation, as the administration has an obligation, to spend the taxpayers' money wisely. And I can tell you that all the money we've received from the feds is borrowed. We're going to be paying, servicing the debt on that for generations. So it has to be put into something that's going to have an extended shelf life. That's my objective. And that's my interest in attracting new business. And just these billion-dollar projects that are sitting out there have been delayed by communities, you know, sewers and water lines and bridges and dams. This is a time, I think, to take a lot of that stuff off the list.
Thank you. Further questions? Councilmember Gould?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Representative Tezdel. You mentioned a lot of really great projects going on. A lot of the things, even in the state of Ohio, they have plans to link their three major metropolitan areas together with high-speed rail. Where does the state of Michigan fit into a more cohesive approach to mass transportation? So we can move forward with some of these more progressive states that are thinking along those lines?
I think right now, the experience out in California with high-speed rail has put a lot of people off of looking at that. But boy, when you think about from Cleveland to Detroit to Chicago, it seems like kind of a no-brainer, maybe even spinning it up to Milwaukee. But we're at a significant disadvantage in this country relative to some others. Standing is granted in the courts to environmental groups. And if you look at the attempts out in California and other places where they're looking at this high-speed rail, there are a lot of environmental groups that are just dead set against it relative to migration patterns for different animals, crossing wetlands, you name it. So that's a significant complication relative to buses or local mass transit. You know, my daughter's lived in Brooklyn for seventeen years. So I understand how a big city, I've seen firsthand how a big, I don't understand it, but I've seen it firsthand how a big city mass transit operates. Successful mass transit starts with pedestrians. Once people get in their cars, they're not going to go to a transit center. They're going to go all the way to their destination. At one time, there was a bus pickup at the Target down on Rochester Road at the south end of Rochester Hills. And you could take a bus from there to Somerset. Well, if you're going to drive your car that far, you continue on the next six or seven miles and just go right to Somerset. And if you look at Rochester Hills in particular, the new subdivisions, you know, the streets look like someone's intestines, you know? And in the new developments out on your east side here. And that was by design because people moved into those neighborhoods for privacy. They didn't want pedestrians walking past their houses. The houses are pushed back off of the street. They're maybe at an angle. The front doors are in dark, recessed alcoves. Your grid streets are perfect for, much more readily accessible to mass transit. But I think what I would like to see more is, instead of spending money on buses that people don't use, put the taxpayer money into ride hailing services and certainly the smart and those kinds of services. I almost said something else. OPC, it delivers, what, 57,000 rides a year, you know, 450,000 miles? So I think those kinds of services can be very effective out here.
Thank you. Further questions?
Hey, this is fun.
We got time, let's go. Any further questions? Thank you for coming tonight. We very much appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your support.
It is difficult to lose jobs to Columbus, Ohio. Just saying. Yeah, so again, thank you, State Representative.
Next, we have further public comment. I'd just like to say that if you want to comment on something that's going to be later in the agenda, I would suggest you wait to that. You know, if we call him on the school thing or something. So are there any other public comment tonight that's not on an agenda item? Brian?
I'm currently seeing no hands raised.
Okay. So we'll move on. Next, we have the approval of the minutes, is consideration of the minutes, the regular meeting of January 10, 2022. Motion by Councilmember Peterson, support by Councilmember Sage. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Savia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Thank you. Next is the approval of the consent agenda. First is request to purchase two patrol vehicles from the state of Michigan bid from Gorno Ford. Total cost, $68,600, which is budgeted in the revolving equipment fund. And next is request to approve the contract with DLZ to perform wellhead protection program plan.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilmember Peterson, support by the mayor pro tem. Discussion? Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Savia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, we have the consideration, old business is the consideration of a table motion regarding the Rochester Community Schools, Administration Building located at 501 West University Drive. So just have a brief statement before we allow people to speak. So first, we understand that this is an important issue in our city. I think we're all very clear on that. As we discussed at the last meeting, we reached out to the Rochester Public Schools to talk about this issue. Myself and the city manager met with Superintendent Dr. Shaner and Board President Kristen Bull. I think she's no longer the board president, but she's board president at the time. We talked about some of our differences and we discussed them very frankly. But we also decided that we needed to come together on this issue. As leaders of the community, all of us, I believe that we need to try to work together and make the best of the situation. We agreed in that meeting that the school board would put their ideas and concerns in writing for us on this council to consider. I believe the district put forth a proposal that is worthy of our consideration. I think that I thank the district for submitting their ideas. We also agreed that moving forward, both our councils and the district, both our council and the district would strive for better communication and collaboration in the future. So tonight, the way I view it is, we have three proposals in front of us. We have the original proposal from last week. We have the proposal from the district. And I'm going to call the compromise proposal from Councilmember Sage, which has what I believe are minor changes from the district's proposal. Those are my words. Finally, I believe that the citizens of Rochester want us to work together as best we can with the schools while we also defend the interest of our city, which is our role here and our responsibility. So the way we're going to work it tonight is we're going to open the floor for comment from the audience. Then when that is finished, we will open it up for discussion tonight on those three proposals. And we will do as the council sees fit. So we met, we reached out, we tried to do what we can, and this is what happened. And again, I feel comfortable that we met and we met in good faith. And hopefully, we can come to some resolution tonight. So Brian, Councilmember Peterson?
Yes, I'm sorry. I don't have a third proposal in my packet. So, no, wait a second. This here is not how we do business. We don't have council people put something together and then just bring it up here. And it's not coming from city administration, okay? Nobody had no communication with anything to do with this. And I'm quite appalled that this is how we're starting this meeting, with information that we haven't been given. Now, you know what? I'm already upset enough about us looking like we've all violated the Open Meetings Act, okay?
We did.
Well, no, I understand that. But when you put other elected officials in jeopardy of that to the public, I don't like it. I'm an elected official. I don't think that all these secret meetings, and I'm going to call them secret because we're really getting this information from last minute here and not all the information in the packet for us to talk about. I don't even know what the other differences are. That should have come through the city manager to this packet if it's to be brought up tonight. So in my eyes, that didn't happen. And I don't know if I have any support here for that, anyone else thinks the same way. But I would, you know, look to some suggestions from the city attorney or the city clerk because this here does not seem the way we're supposed to be doing business. Never have done it this way before.
All right, now we will open it up to...
I want an answer. Excuse me, Mayor. I want an answer.
There was no secret meeting? If there's, I just announced the meeting we had.
No, I understand.
So it was not a secret?
Okay, but that's not what was tabled. At the table of our motion was that we were to, city administration was to invite, invite the public of the Rochester Community Schools here. Not to meet. None of us knew that you were meeting. No one was told that there was going to be a meeting.
We said we were going to reach out to the school district.
Yeah, so they could show up here.
Okay. In meeting with it there, we asked them to send this to us. And it was mutually agreed upon, again, myself and the school board president, that that's what they were going to send. And we thought for this discussion, they didn't need to come to the meeting.
Well, which one did they write?
They wrote...
This does not, this says LeAnn O'Connor. This has nothing to say that this came from them. I want some answers as to who wrote this that we're supposed to be talking about.
So the one we tabled from last week?
I understand, I have that one.
The second one was from the school board.
So when do we let another entity write a resolution that comes from us?
No. They wrote that for us to consider. That's nothing more. We are considering things. And Councilmember Sage, I guess, is going to present something tonight as well for us to consider in a public meeting. That's all. They did not, they do not dictate what we did. They sent us a proposal for this board publicly to consider.
Well, it was an edit, not a written from scratch. Is that correct?
Yeah, they edited our, they put their views on our amendment from last week for us to consider, nothing more. Councilmember Albert?
I was responding to Councilmember Peterson because I was listening to what she had to say. We did get in the manager's report that we received on Friday that this meeting took place on Wednesday. I'm just reading it, January 19. I got in my packet, which we all did, the original one on page forty-six.
I understand all that, Councilmember Albrecht.
I'm still talking.
Yes, you are.
And then we have the one that's presented by Rochester Community Schools after that meeting on page forty-seven. And my understanding is that Councilmember Sage is going to present some options. There's nothing to hand out. I haven't, so I'm speaking for you, Councilmember Sage. But my understanding was you had some comments based on the version two that you're going to present after we hear public comment. Did I get that right?
Correct.
Okay. I, you know, I don't like the accusation of, well, we violate Open Meetings Act because I...
No, you did, well, then you know what? Everyone needs to listen because the public has stated it online on social media saying that the mayor and city council had met, okay? So I don't take kindly to that. I actually responded publicly to that as well because that is the assumption that took place. So I was asking for clarification. I read my packet. I know that that stuff was in there from him, but we did not know that they met on Wednesday until after they met.
Right.
Okay, well, as council, we should know when they're going to meet on something so important. All we had to do was be told. And then for them to meet and then just put something together that is on our resolution instead of just a memo that said, this is their recommendations. This already went out to everybody. The whole world saw this. And that's what's caused more grief over this. And I don't like receiving phone calls from the residents of this community that think that we're violating something and not doing our job.
I think the social media comments are inaccurate because there's been no violation of any...
I understand that, but I wanted it addressed because these things should not be happening. We don't, I don't conduct business this way as far as an elected official, and I don't want others doing it either, to where that perception is out there because it sure looks like a duck.
I disagree with that, but let's move on.
Okay, so we're going to open it up to public comments now. So Brian?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'd just make a comment. If you would like to speak on Zoom, just use the raise your hand feature. I'll call your name. You can unmute yourself. And then I would just ask that you mute yourself again once you're done speaking.
And then we also ask that you identify yourself and give your address for the record.
Correct, thank you. So I would start with Stephanie Van Dale. If you'd like to unmute yourself?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, welcome.
Thank you. My name is Stephanie Van Dale and my address is 61788 Sunnybrook Court in Washington Township, Michigan. My children are students at Rochester Community Schools. And that's why I'm speaking up at this meeting. I don't know if you guys... I don't know if you guys have realized this or not, but I think that the only way you can move forward with getting any kind of sense knocked into RCS is if you use the first version of the letter. These are not, this superintendent will not listen to the parents, and he does not listen to anyone else unless you are jingling money in front of his face. He is very frustrating to work with. He is, I don't have very high hopes for him as a human being.
I guess let's, I guess I'd just say, let's stick to the issues here as opposed to the personal attacks.
The only, the only way that they are going to do anything at all is if you use the first version of the letter. Nobody cares about the artifacts inside of the building. They want to keep the actual building itself. That's what everybody's getting up in arms about. I would like, personally, that's the charm of Rochester, is that it has these cute little buildings in a wonderful downtown that you can go and enjoy the Christmas lights and, you know, just a real small-town kind of charm, okay? That's why I moved to this area. And, you know, fight for us, come on. This is just ridiculous that you should go off and have a secret little lunch meeting with him either. And no, this is not how it should be done, and I'm muting. I'm done, I'm disgusted with all you politicians.
Thank you. Again, I would just say for the record, it was a, it was not a secret meeting. There was four people in the meeting, people knew about the meeting, there's nothing that was decided in the meeting. All it was, was a talking among leaders to try to work out a problem. And there was absolutely nothing illegal, untoward, and I'll stick with that. Okay, next question.
And they were supposed to come to you and be here, and I don't see them anywhere in this room. That's what you said last week, you were supposed to have them at the meeting, and you didn't, you met them off-site. That's why I'm disgusted.
Okay. Next comments, Brian?
Yes, I see a hand from Tiffany Zerman. Would you like to unmute yourself?
Tiffany, welcome.
Thank you, good evening. I just wanted to make a statement based on the resolution. So I'm the president of the Rochester Avon Historical Society. Our mailing address is P.O. Box 80783 in downtown Rochester. First, I do want to thank city council for writing a proposed resolution highlighting a preference for historic preservation of the RCS administration building, as it's obviously now on the market to be sold. I have read the revised resolution submitted to city council, and I'm concerned about the language in this revision. A particular concern is item three, which now states, quote, "The Rochester City Council encourages the RCS Board of Education to consider alternative use or redevelopment of the property that complements the interests of the community and respects the heritage of the site," end quote. The revision, that revision essentially means nothing when it comes to historic preservation and can in fact be interpreted to mean that really nothing more than a historical marker be erected in front of a brand-new building. In item four, the term "historical" is missing in this revised resolution. It reads in part, quote, "encourages the RCS Board to maximize opportunities for preserving the RCS building," end quote. Without the terms "historical preservation" or any reference to "historical" in front of the word "preserving," I think the statement can also be loosely interpreted to mean simply saving a cornerstone or some other minor detail of the building. I can assure you that as, to a non-preservation developer or builder, the definition of preservation is not the same as a historian. The buyer of my 1940s bungalow house at North Castell in downtown Rochester assured me in 2017 that he would keep it standing and simply add on to it, and six months later, he knocked it down. And when I asked him about it, he said, quote, "Well, the basement and the first floor deck is still in place," end quote. That was his definition of preservation. The basement and the first floor deck were still intact. Yes, the walls, the doors, the windows, the roof, they're all gone. So just be aware that the definition of preservation is vastly different in the developer world. In addition, it's important, I think, to highlight specifically the WPA works and the artists in the resolution. These works are priceless. So why not say something to the effect of, quote, "to maximize opportunities for the historical preservation of the RCS building, along with a WPA mural by Marvin Beerbaum and the WPA bar relief by Leonard Youngworth, various other artwork, artifacts, and other historical items located therein, et cetera," end quote. And, you know, not every community has such a historically significant piece of art dating from before World War II that was in response to putting people to work during the Depression. And this building has two of them. They are worth noting individually, and with the artist's name in such a resolution. So from the historical society's perspective, the preference here is for this resolution to take a stronger stance for historical preservation and not a weakened statement about the overall heritage of the site. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian?
I'm currently seeing no more hands raised.
Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak? Yeah, please, come up to the podium. Welcome.
Thank you, city council, and good evening. My name is Jessica Opfer, and I live at 146 Terry. I am a 20-year resident of the city of Rochester and the parent of two children in Rochester Community Schools. It's been a few years since I've spoken before this body, but I've had a very positive relationship with the city in the past. First, a number of years ago, as the previous executive director of the Clinton River Watershed Council, and more recently, in my efforts to promote pedestrian and bicycle safety at North Hill Elementary, and I thank you all for that partnership. I was compelled to speak tonight regarding the city's consideration of this resolution in support of the historic RCS administration building. This building represents 175 years of educational history in the oldest community in Oakland County and is a visual representation of Rochester Community Schools' pride and excellence. The building is one of the largest historical structures remaining outside of our beautiful downtown and is a symbol of our community's historic character. Up until this point in time, we have entrusted Rochester Community Schools as its steward and caretaker. In November 2020, RCS decided to walk away from that stewardship without informing or involving the community or our city leaders. We're all aware that the building is in a state of decline and needs intensive restoration. I do not believe we would be here tonight, however, if RCS had made the effort to engage the community in exploring collaborative strategies to preserve the building from the very beginning. Instead, we were all blindsided by the district's decision, which played out in a matter of minutes last April 12th, without any opportunity for public comment, to vacate the building, leaving its future completely up in the air. Since then, the Legacy Committee formed to discuss the building's future has met in secrecy, its members unable to communicate with one another outside formal meetings. Key members of our community who expressed an interest in participating were excluded without explanation. And parents and community members who have questioned the district's process have been attacked. We deserve better than this, the city of Rochester deserves better than this. We deserve better than bullying, strong-arm tactics, secret negotiations, and thinly veiled threats. Historic preservation is key to our community's character and is directly linked to our quality of life and property values. Communities across the country have rallied behind efforts to creatively reuse historic school structures. There's no reason why we cannot join them, but such efforts cannot succeed without the collaboration and involvement of the entire community, of anyone who wishes to be a part of it. I ask the city, therefore, to include the original stronger language of this resolution, specifically in item four, stating that the city encourages RCS to maximize historical preservation of the building, not just its artifacts. I also urge the city council and planning commission to take every available step in the review and approval process to ensure that the building's architectural heritage is preserved. Finally, I encourage the city to create its own independent committee to represent the voice of the Rochester community, to guide the process moving forward, and for that committee to operate transparently with special attention to minimizing any possible conflicts of interest in the process. We, the citizens of the greater Rochester area, call upon Rochester Community Schools, the city of Rochester, and interested developers to collaborate with the community to find a creative solution for adaptive reuse of the building complex and to retain this important symbol of our local history and of our pride in education. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, a caller joined during the last comment with their hand raised.
Okay, then we'll get you next. Okay, Brian, go ahead.
Yep, the phone number, I mean, 202, if you'd like to unmute yourself.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, welcome.
Well, hi, Patricia Kane, 817 West Fourth Street, Rochester. I agree with the two people that just spoke in regards to this. I will tell you, the only way we're going to get compromise and somebody to work with, open-minded, and to be able to sit down is if we have a new board and a new superintendent. This is going to be conflict all the way. They don't care about our history, they care about the money. They've screwed Rochester right now with two parcels of property without taxes. I am very disappointed that Mayor Barnett is not in the audience supporting the city of Rochester for this historic building of 175 years of education, as well as the superintendent of Oakland Township. They should have been here, and they are not. They don't have historic preservation as far as these buildings go. They should be there. This is the Rochester Community Schools doing this, and they're doing it to our community. Our wing people aren't there, that says a lot to me. But it says more with this board, who is not open. Back in June, when I spoke in front of the board about what they were doing and how they did it, I was met with silence. I rephrased the question, because I heard already they had talked with developers for that parcel of property that we're fighting for now. Again, met with silence. After that, I heard from Legacy a couple of comments made about a developer. Again, met with silence. We have a problem, they're going to bury our history. They could have saved this building with different budgeting and had they put all the money into it that they've spent, overspent, on a building that they don't even need, that entire size. If you took all the money, the fees, everything, they could have renovated 50% of our existing historic building. We need to preserve it. Get as tough as you want, you've got a community behind you. I don't think that board knows that, or Shaner, because the only way we may end up getting things done and preserved where we are even minimally satisfied, because we don't trust them, they are not transparent, and they bully. And for someone in education to treat the taxpayers who pay for everything they use and do, including the pencils in their hands, is wrong and insulting, not only to us hard-working taxpayers, but to our city, who they have not included in anything. So I would like it preserved, we back you. You do what you need to do and stay strong, and I am, again, very disappointed in this school board and in the superintendent. And if it keeps up, I think we need to think about, as residents, replacing them. Thank you, and have a good evening, stay the course, bye-bye.
Thank you, Pat. Welcome.
My name is Andrew Weaver, I'll give you my address offline. So actually, after you guys' last meeting, I was very encouraged by what I heard. I heard many people around this table speak with the same passion that we just heard many parents speak with. I heard people around this table use the terms that they felt that they were bullied, that the messages were threatening, that they were told that they couldn't have access to certain things. And again, frustration around this table sounded like many of those parents that just spoke, and many of the parents have been speaking for two years. It is very disappointing to hear what we're hearing today. Yes, when you left your last meeting, it was about having a public conversation to invite the person here. So, Mayor, it might not be illegal to go have that meeting offsite? It was the wrong thing to do. It was, they should have been here. They should have come and spoke to the community. This is a moment when the community could have come together. I can tell you, the parents that have spoke, I've spoken to most of them over the last two years. We disagree on a lot of things, we agree on a lot of things. But the one thing that's constant is that the communication, the transparency, and the bullying from the district is happening. And everyone around this table, last meeting you guys had, acknowledged that. And now today, it's gone. Absolutely, we literally just listened to you guys say, argue over semantics of whether you got violated a law. It was the wrong thing to do. The community deserves better. So no, it wasn't that you guys thought you got bullied and people that said they don't like to be bullied, you got bullied. You got told by Shaner what you're going to do. So please, stand up and do the right thing. This is something that the community can come together around and protect and save that building. Enough is enough of trying to be perceived and worrying about what someone thinks of them. Do the right thing.
Thank you. Any other comments? Brian, anything else?
I have not seen any, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Do we have written correspondence?
Do we have anything written?
Yes, Your Honor, through Mayor Protem Salvia, I received two emails today. First, from Vern Pixley. "As a lifelong resident of Rochester Community and sixth-generation Rochester Community Schools graduate, I wholeheartedly support the adaptive reuse of the Harrison Building that has been the home of the Rochester Community Schools administration offices. This building is historic, and while it may require significant investment, it is a community landmark that should be preserved. Please consider making the investment needed to maintain this structure as a very important part of our history." And the second comment received was from Lori Pixley on Harrison in Rochester. "Good morning, Rochester City Council. I'm a City of Rochester resident and would love to see the RCS administration building preserved and reimagined for a modern purpose. It is an iconic part of our community, and I believe we, with your help, can come up with a way to save this vibrant part of our city and have it reimagined for a modern purpose. I understand there will be many challenges, and I would love to be part of the solution. I've attached a great read and really am interested in helping to save this building."
Thank you. Any further public comments before we go to the council? One more? Sure.
I just wanted to add that this strategy of holding one-on-one meetings with individuals is something that the school district has done time and time and again in an effort to divide people and in an effort to make you feel isolated and make you feel like no one agrees with you. And I'm speaking from the heart here when I say that that's totally unacceptable. The school district was asked to be here tonight, and they're not here, and that speaks volumes. The meeting, it's okay to have offside meetings, they happen in government, they happen with the school district. That's normal, it's the way of doing business, you can't discuss it all. It can't all come out in these public meetings, we know that. As parents, as community members, we know that there are private conversations that happen and deliberations that happen behind the scenes. But the crux of it is that the core stuff has to happen out here in the open, and it's not happening in this case. And it hasn't happened in many, many other instances with this school district over the past two years. I've had enough experience with local government, I know school boards don't work the same way, but some of the rules are the same. And speaking openly and transparently to your constituents, that's the primary role of any elected official, whether you're a city council person or a school board member. And the fact that the school district consists on doing this in private, backdoor decisions, it is, it does, it doesn't sit well, it doesn't sit well with all of you, I know that. It doesn't sit well with us, the constituents, just like we elected city council, we elected our school board. So I really hope you take that heart, I'm really disappointed. board. So, I really hope you take that heart. I'm really disappointed to not see any of them here tonight, even if that, you know, the meeting was a productive meeting, sure, but they should be here tonight to discuss this with you openly and honestly so that the public can hear what they have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. Okay, so we'll end the public discussion, and now we will, in public, transparently, discuss this. Councilmember Sage, you had your hand up.
I will defer until I hear from my colleagues.
Okay. Discussion?
I can open.
Mayor Protem Salvia.
Thank you. So, I guess, you know, what I was, I see there's a lot of people on the, participating in the meeting, but that haven't made comments. So, what I was really looking forward to in this meeting was hearing from the public, hearing from the residents. I'm sure if we ran around the table, every council member has had phone calls, emails, Facebook posts. We've all heard from constituents and their love and their care for this Harrison Building. And so, I, that's what I want to be noted in the public record of the correspondence we've received, the comments we've received. And really, I think it affirms what council set out to do at our last meeting, was to publish a resolution voicing that support and that concern by our residents that we have, we've, I believe, all heard. So, I think that is important. I think by tabling the discussion, just tabling the resolution, it allowed for those public comments to come out. I do think there needs to be some changes made to the resolution that we initially presented. I do think there need to be some details added that would further support our position. I also have taken some time over the past two weeks to read through the notes that have been made available to city council from the Legacy Committee. Those notes indicate they really want community feedback. They are looking for that, so I believe this process is part of that, of getting that community feedback, that we should incorporate into our resolution. And I'm gonna pause there. Thank you.
Councilmember Gould?
Thanks, Ms. Mayor. I just had a question of clarification, I guess. Was this, I know we discussed inviting the school board here for this. Were they invited, and how does that work? How did that look? And did they flat-out refuse, or how does that go?
They, they were invited. I mean, we publicly invited them, and we discussed that at the meeting, and they felt like by sending this correspondence, they felt like it was better to do it that way as opposed to them coming because they felt like it would cause a firestorm. And I said, "That's your choice," you know, and that's where it was. So, they were invited. It was discussed. They felt like this was the better way, and that was where that is. Thank you. Councilmember Peterson?
Thank you, Mayor. So, hometown Rochester, in print, the eighteen eighty-nine building named in honor of the beloved custodian William Harrison was the sole occupant of the site until nineteen sixteen, when the Rochester High School building was erected. An addition was made to the high school in nineteen twenty and twenty-one, and in nineteen twenty-nine, the Harrison Building was physically joined to the high school with another addition which honored, which housed the junior high grades. The entire complex became known as the Central Junior High School in nineteen sixty-one, and eventually became home of the school district administrative offices. The reason for reading this is because, and it's been stated, and it's been stated many times, we are the first settlement in Oakland County. This was one of the most significant buildings in our community ever, besides the bakery, you know, downtown. And this one here, I mean, when you go in print and you have history like this, it's not easy to have a community not care for what would happen to something. I, I want to hear what these additional thoughts are on the changes to this resolution that was originally given. And before I make any more comments, thank you.
Councilmember Harrison?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciated all of the comments from the public this evening. I think we all, as a council, wanted to hear from you. That was important to us. We also wanted to hear from the school district. So, although I appreciate our mayor meeting with school administrators, I am really disappointed that they're not here this evening. I really wanted that opportunity to ask them my questions directly and to hear from them. I think having public dialogue is so important to all of us. So, that is a disappointment. I'd like to add that when I first was presented with this resolution in our packet a few weeks ago, I was surprised by it. I know the historical importance of the building, but I don't believe we've ever done anything like this for any other building. The elevator company comes to mind, so I was a little bit surprised that we were taking this on as an issue. But I do understand the importance of the building. I love that you mentioned that it was named after the custodian. The janitor, Mr. Harrison, was so well-loved. Pat McKay shared this story with me. He used to ring the bell, and if he could see a student running into class who was going to be late, he'd keep ringing it until that student made it. And it's those stories, I think, that make Rochester such a special place to live. This is what makes us different. So, I am glad to see the resolution presented before us. I'm proud of us for giving RCS the opportunity to make edits and adjustments, because I believe that shows that we are cooperative in nature as a council. And now, I think that we will make some more changes to their edits tonight and stick with this resolution. I'd also like to reiterate to the public that this is step one of many. This is a resolution expressing our feelings about this situation. It is nothing, it's not like legislation dictating what can happen. It's simply an opinion that we are putting out there. The next steps in the process is the building gets sold, and then it goes through the zoning process, and we, as a council, have to approve anything that goes on that location. So, this is one step in many to come in this process.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Thank you, Mayor. And I appreciated all the comments that Stephanie, Tiffany, Andrew, Jessica, Pat made, and the two written comments that I think all of us received, the email this morning from Vern Pixley and his wife. And since that last meeting, I was one of the ones that said I felt bullied by that first email from the attorney, one of the attorneys, and not willing to, you know, compromise. Being an HR background, knowing that or understanding that Rochester Community Schools were probably not comfortable coming here, I supported the fact of having the mayor and city manager meet with the superintendent and the board president, knowing that whatever outcome of that was gonna come before the public, which it was today, or on Friday when the packets went out. When I received the second resolution, and I've talked to both sides, I've, you know, I've heard both sides, and I hate to use the word sides because we should all be working together, but in terms of Rochester Community Schools and the Rochester Avon Historical Society, and I felt that the second resolution that is in the packet, the only one we've seen, we've seen the first one from the meeting two weeks ago, and the second one that's in today's meeting, and hopefully we'll hear shortly from Councilmember Sage some edits he suggested. I felt that this one lacked some of the teeth or direction that the citizens that I've talked to wanted in that first resolution. So, again, more to your point, Andrew, you know, I understand, you know, you disagreed with the fact that a meeting took place, but I feel when you get people together in a room, I mean, we couldn't get seven of them in the room and the whole Rochester Community Schools Board in a room, that if we had some representatives from both sides and being the mayor and city manager wing and the superintendent and Kristen Bull, the board president, that we could move this, move the ball down the field a little bit. And we're here now today looking at the second one, which I don't think any of us are really jumping through hoops saying, "This is a great one. Let's just approve it tonight." That's not where I'm at. So, I wanted to sort of tee that up because I listen. I've listened to what you said tonight. I've had calls. I've had emails. I've talked to people. I've met with people since the last meeting, and I think we're, we've moved it down, and we've moved it forward, excuse me. And I'd like to, the one I see in the packet, I can't support tonight, so I'm curious and eager to see what our fellow councilmember Sage presents, and maybe we can talk about that and get some feedback from the public on that. So, I just wanted to explain where I was coming from in terms of my opinion as a city councilperson. And I've always been one that, and I don't like emails. I don't like phone calls. I like sitting face-to-face and getting things done. And I was hoping that that, that the mayor, city manager, superintendent, and Kristen Bull, the board president, could achieve that and come back tonight. And maybe that can still happen. So, thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Sage?
Thank you, Mayor. And I appreciate all the comments from my colleagues here. So, this board uses a resolution for a few functions or a few purposes, if you will. We use it to convey the position of the city on a specific issue. We use it to recognize a special event or a special person. And finally, we use it to codify the sentiments and feelings of the citizens of Rochester specific to an issue. And that's exactly what we're trying to do with this resolution. So, the last time we met, we had a resolution before us. I actually seconded moving it forward. We had further discussion, and it was, we chose to table it out of a spirit of cooperation that we've all mentioned here, to consult with RCS board. So, based on that consultation and with that decision from this board, we invited them publicly, "Please." I adamantly engaged them to come and speak at this meeting to better understand their position. So, what transpired then was an opportunity for this board, representatives of this board and the city, to meet with representatives from the school board, which they asked then, could they submit a resolution that might better express their position on, or feelings with regards to ours. Okay, so we considered all that. And what I did then was just place our resolution and theirs side by side, and then considered it. Okay, the one thing that I noticed on their resolution, they had stripped out all reference to historical significance and preservation of both the building and the artifacts. Okay, that was unacceptable to me. So, I have posited to add back in, using their framework, but posit back in within every one of the actionable items, if you will, to protect that, to recognize the building, to recognize the historical significance, to recognize and specifically call out. I incorporated input from my colleagues here, from Tiffany at the Historical Society, and others that I've received correspondence from. So, my version actually recognizes those two Work Progress Administration Act art pieces by name and by their creator.
Yes.
So, I'm hopeful that you'll consider it. I'm not looking to continue this debate for another meeting. I'm hopeful that we could just actually look at something, consider it, and make a decision, or we go back to the original.
Councilmember Sage is, is this...
I have copies I can hand out.
Well, the...
Yes, I did communicate it to everyone individually.
But the city clerk, so she made copies of this? Is this what you had?
Your final version?
I have the final version, yes.
Okay.
Could we share it on the screen?
That would be good.
Like, Brian, could you pull it up?
Is it in the packet?
No.
No.
I don't know.
If someone could email it to me, I...
I'll email it to you. I would say I'm on it.
Or we have a hard copy here if anybody wants it.
I'm on your way. All right, I'll leave it to you, Nancy.
I hope I got the right one, Steve. Thanks.
Does it include the naming of the artworks?
It does.
Okay.
And items one, two, three, and four?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, while we're waiting for that, are there any other comments while we have this?
I think we should give everyone some time to read it.
Just, Your Honor, just procedurally, Attorney Crattan and I spoke today. Since council made a motion to adopt that first resolution, changes that would be made to it would need to be done by amendment, which would require its own motion, then a vote on the amendment, and then if it's passed, then incorporate it into the resolution, and then a vote on that. So, you'd actually be taking two votes. Okay?
Okay, so, in reality, the motion that would be, when we bring the motion back, the motion on the table will be from the original one from last week.
That is correct.
So, then we would have to vote to amend that
Correct.
motion, and then pass it with the amendments.
Yes, Your Honor.
Very good.
Can you see it okay?
Yes. If you can make it
Zoom in.
As large as you can. Well, maybe start at the...
Get rid of the header or something.
Yeah.
May I please have one?
Good. Okay.
May I please have one?
Yes.
Never mind. Thank you.
If I can walk through the changes that I proposed. With regard to the actual title of the resolution, to better clarify the actual address of the building, as it is then also mentioned in the first whereas paragraph. The third whereas paragraph needed some clarification because originally it identified a city planner. Incorrect. The city manager is part of the Legacy Committee.
So, excuse me, so just so everybody knows, this is the version that the school board sent over, and then these are the changes that Councilmember Sage is putting forth for our discussion.
Oh, I thought he was changing ours. That's what I, that I just heard him say. He was using ours.
The mayor's correct. I used theirs as a foundation and incorporated back the spirit and understanding of historical significance and preservation into their proposed resolution.
Okay, cool. Mr. Sage?
It also referenced local historical planners on the Legacy Committee. Incorrect. Those are actually retirees and professionals serving on local historical societies and commissions. The third whereas, the school board had replaced the property itself as the point of heritage and recognized the district as the point of being significant, which is incorrect. It is truly the property that shares that heritage with our community. So, I corrected that in some of the more actionable items under the therefore section. And I'd like to read these out loud because these were mentioned directly by some of the public comment. So, item three, "Rochester City Council encourages the RCF Board of Education to consider alternate use or redevelopment of the property, including repurpose or relocation of the historical artifacts located therein that complements the interests of the community and respects the heritage of the site." Number four, "Rochester City Council encourages the RCS Board of Education to maximize opportunities for preserving the RCS building along with the WPA mural by Marvin Beerbaum, the WPA bass relief by Leonard Youngworth, the various artwork, murals, artifacts, and other historical components located therein, and expresses its willingness to participate and lend assistance and furtherance of this goal." So, it was hopeful to capture all the original sentiment of our original resolution with specific guidance on understanding that this is a historical site with heritage to our community and our intent to want it to be preserved. And Councilmember Harrison and others have made a good point. a good point. Whoever buys this property still has to come to Planning Commission first. So, there'll be a lengthy discussion with regards to that developer's understanding of the historical nature of this property and the building. And then, quite possibly, depending on how it's approved through planning, would come before this board for a further review. So, I think there are still opportunities here for continued discussion. And like I said, I'm hopeful that this gives us a path forward to where we make our intentions known as a city, and assure the citizens here that we support them.
Thank you, Councilmember Sage. Councilmember Gould?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember Sage, for this work. I think you've done a wonderful job, sort of reintroducing our initial intention. My question's rather specific. I noted when a couple of members of the public were talking, and I wrote down historical preservation, exclamation point, exclamation point, as if those two words together have very significant meaning. And I know that that's not in here. Is that something we should consider putting in? Is that a buzzword? Do we have to have to get our point across? Or is the way this is written okay? I don't know.
I would open that to this board.
Thank you, Mayor. I do believe that those two do go together, because you're not going to preserve anything unless it has a historical significance. And that is what, that was what the whole entire top of theirs said, as well as, you know, what we've been conveying to them, is what we had in our original thing. It was the historical property preservation. That was in our original. That's what it headed with.
And I would ask the city attorney, but that, when you, that seemed to be the word, I'm just the messenger, that seemed to be the word that the school board had a problem with. Councilmember Albert?
Councilmember Peterson and Councilmember Gould, I have the first one from two meetings ago, and I'm holding it, you know, I'm doing not what you were, you thought it was. I'm holding that one against the one Councilmember Sage has put together. We didn't, I don't see where we have added the historical preservation. It wasn't in the first one.
It's in the title.
It was the title, yeah.
I think the resolution regarding the sale of...
Property preservation versus making the building.
I'm missing something. Okay, then, then I agree. Then, I didn't see that in the version that I had, so I'm missing something here.
Well, I think that's the problem. I think there's been some other ones that have come through, but this is the one I had from the last meeting.
I see it now, too.
Councilmember Harrison?
What was, and I wish the school board was here to answer this question, but what was their issue? Because I'm not even sure. What is the issue with the term historical property preservation?
I'll get my comment. Let the city attorney come in. I mean, I think they think that that, again, this is what they said, that they felt like that had a chilling effect on the sale. Like, that had connotations that you couldn't do certain things, and things like that. So, I think that's what, and Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, thank you. That is correct. The concept here is that, you know, this property, while this board may consider it to be a historical building, and by age and usefulness, who's to argue? However, it is not a designated, it's not in a historic district. So, it doesn't have a legal title of historic building. That, when you use historic preservation, I think Ms. Zerman hit on that as well, you know, there are certain connotations that go with, if a building is a historic building, like the home bakery Ms. Peterson mentioned, that is in a historic district. And so, there are certain things that have to happen for changes to happen. So, the, when you, the connotation then is, if the city refers to this as a historic building, it can be taken as a, from a developer's standpoint, again, I'm the messenger, and from a developer's standpoint, that there are additional historical hoops that have to jump through to modify it, like it was, if it was in a historic district, like the home bakery. So, the tying of calling it a historic building, along with the, you know, the city having to approve it, the idea was that that would scare off developers to say, well, I don't want to go through that historic preservation process, or it diminishes the value. Because, to be honest, I mean, the city has recognized that this is the school district's property, and the city is not trying to stop development. I mean, that's been clear from what I've been hearing. But when you use the word historic preservation, that means something to a lot of people.
Thank you. Councilmember Peterson?
Yes, could the deputy city manager, Mr. Banda, verify where our historic district lies in the city, if we have one?
We do not have an historic...
Not for the school board.
I understand that, but, so what else is, where is the boundary at for the public?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, may I jump in?
City manager?
The city doesn't have, they have, they don't have contiguous districts. They have non-contiguous, which are single property. So, all of the historic properties in the city of Rochester are listed in the ordinance by address and Sidwell number. So, there isn't a boundary necessarily, because it's a particular property, like I used the home bakery, because you mentioned it, that is one of them. So, when you look in the ordinance, it'll say, this property, here's the address, here's the legal description, Sidwell, that is considered a district. I think there's five or six of them in the city of Rochester.
Correct. And for clarification, I wanted the public to know that historical preservation for this building alone, for RCS administration building, has no rules to where any developer coming to the city would find that out, that they are not held to any standards regarding that, to where our resolution's standing for historical property preservation is our feelings on this, as well as the community's, and not, it would not have a bearing on the sale or development of this property.
Councilmember Gould?
Thank you. I guess that's what I was trying to say. Anybody that's going to buy this building's gonna have tens of millions of dollars, gonna have enough sophistication to realize they're just words from the council.
Right. Well, that's, that's what we said last week, but, you know, obviously that wasn't agreed with RCS.
Further comments? Councilmember Peterson?
Yes. So, I'm going off on something right now to, for something I've done a lot of thinking on regarding this building, and the community, and how they feel about this, and how we've had this, how we've had this type of situation come before us with other community properties, okay, that have historic value. And from the oldest town, oldest home in Rochester that was torn down for a parking lot, started this a long time ago, too. So, we've been there and done this with many of these properties, and we've done it with the elevator. We, you know, saved the elevator, and everyone came and painted it to preserve it and take care of it. And we need to do the same thing with this one. And I am actually seriously asking city council and administration to consider that the city of Rochester purchase this building and move our city offices into there, and turn this into the police station for the city. We've grown, we've changed with times and everything, and I feel it's something that we could, as a community, solve a lot of our issues for events, things like that. It's up to date regarding technology, and has a lot of positive things for it. And then we can control the preservation of everything that's inside there, which would have been something that I would have liked all those murals and everything to come to our own building. I know it's probably something we can't, I know we can't make decisions on this tonight, but I think it's something very important that we should be, we should take into account and think about. And then, we take it back, and we preserve it for our community.
Okay, I think, I think we should focus on what we're doing tonight. Mayor Protem Salvia?
I do think it should be considered and discussed by the city manager, or at a future city council meeting, whatever would be appropriate, as an alternative.
So, I think that would be an appropriate item during our budget discussion.
Yep.
Councilmember Albert?
So, to, Councilmember Sage, you took us through your changes, and I'm sorry I missed the historical property preservation in the first one. Are you, would you make that change to add that into the title as part of our discussion tonight? Or, because your change does not have, your change has resolution regarding sale of Rochester Community Schools Administration Building at 501 West University Drive. And the original one now that I see is resolution regarding Rochester Community Schools Historical Property Preservation. Is that something that you'd be comfortable making?
Yeah, of course I would support it. If that's the feeling of this consensus of this body, that they would change the title of the resolution, I have no...
And City Attorney Krot, is that something that would cause, I mean, cause us some issues?
Mr. City Attorney?
Well, there's a couple different historical preservation issues that we're dealing with, right? Which is, the one is the, I'll say perceived historic value of the building. I know it's real here, but to some, maybe it's not. But it's also the historical preservation of the stuff inside. So, I, you know, I wouldn't get as worked up about the title of the resolution as maybe working in, you know, perhaps in paragraph two, if you wanted to put historical preservation in there. And I'm looking at the Sage version, and two is say that the city of Rochester values historical preservation.
Yes.
And then have the, continue from there. So, you're putting historical preservation in number two. Perhaps that's an idea. I think that may have more impact than putting it into the title itself.
I think that's good.
I think that's a good suggestion. Okay. Thank you for your counsel.
You're welcome.
Mayor?
Mayor Protem Salvia?
So, we have before us a draft of a resolution. I guess, I am, I'm willing to put my support behind this draft of a resolution. I think it's important that we get our resolution, our constituents' thoughts out before the public. You know, one major thought that I've been thinking about quite a bit about this is the fact that this is a public asset. It was paid for by tax dollars. And the school district has tax dollars that they have spent on another building. So, we're talking about allocation of tax dollars. That's just a very strong point to me that I just wanted to make. Thank you.
Yeah, it's all tax dollars.
What motions do we need to make to...
So, I guess, are we, is everybody clear exactly where everybody, I mean, we've kind of gone back and forth with some things. Councilmember Harrison?
Could we give the public the opportunity to make any comments after reviewing this version, since this is the first time they've been given access to it as well, or is that not appropriate at this time?
Well, I mean, I think we're deciding this in council now. I mean, I guess if, you know, an option would be if you wanted more public, you could table it, or we could just do it tonight. But I'm just saying, is everybody clear exactly which, what's being said on every line on the council? Councilmember Albert?
Just to be clear, I, the one we see on the screen is the one we're going with, with the change of number two, that the city of Rochester values historical preservation. That's the only change. I, you know, I know we've had a lot of conversations, but I want to be crystal clear for the people in the audience, and those who are looking at this at home. On the screen, we've only changed, you have, you can scroll up a little bit more, Brian. Yeah, number two, where it's that the city of Rochester values, and then just the two words, historical preservation, and then everything else stays the same. That's the one we are considering. And I'm just looking around the room at some of the people here in the public, and I see some head nods that, you know, that we've, we're moving this along in a good direction.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes. So, on the version that came from, the one that's redlined, that's on the thing, and paragraph three at the top, coming down, this was actually had, this actually, this committee actually had a name, and I actually think that it should actually state what the committee's name was, because...
Legacy committee.
Yes, correct. And I do believe, so it wasn't just an advisory, it was actually a name of a committee. So, for history purposes, everyone would know where to go to look for information, if there is any.
Could we possibly say an advisory board so named the legacy committee?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, just so it's named, it's actually properly named. I'm not understanding, though, how, why it says, like, family members, business representatives. I mean, I know that's what it was comprised of, but, you know, family members, it's like, so who is allowed to be, what family wasn't? I mean, we're breaking it down into such a diverse state, open statement that, you know, it doesn't look like many people had an opportunity to be a part of something, by the way this is broken down.
Well, but, right, I would just say, but that was what they did, not what we're doing.
No, I understand that, but this is, this is actually, this is, this is what we're supposed to put our signature on.
And I assume family members mean that you have a child in the district.
But this is very open. It's not, it's not very clear as to how this is for something that's going to go in the records forever as a resolution.
Councilmember Sage, are you good?
If it would be amended to read, then, whereas it is the city of Rochester's understanding that RCS is in the process of evaluating the RCS building while consulting with an advisory board named the legacy committee, and, so just redact all the identifiers to who's on there?
Well, since there were so many errors anyhow, I just think that...
Yeah, just put the legacy committee.
Yeah.
Legacy committee.
Fine.
Because we don't really know who's...
We don't.
I have some questions. Yeah, we don't know.
In the following paragraph, if I may, Mayor?
Yes.
Says, "The city of Rochester considers the RCS building and the various artwork, murals, artifacts, and other components located therein to have greater, to have great historical significance." This here should actually be in line and in fitting with number two and three, and, I mean, they're all, we're just duplicating it without the same sort of sentiment and strength, I feel.
Yeah, I mean, this isn't a legal document, I guess. So, I mean, I think it gets the point across.
The thing is, though, even though it's, it is a legal document, because we are signing it as a resolution for history of our community.
But it's not a legal document.
Understanding that, but if it's not, if this is not that significant, then we shouldn't be doing this at all then, because what we're putting in writing is actually stating something. And to just do something with, on the fly of just a few words, and not really have the depth and the heart for something, it shouldn't go into that, and that thought should go into saving. Well, we actually had all of this in the original one anyhow, you know, that we wanted to move forward with the sale. And we want them to just take care of understanding what the public wants, so.
Further comments?
I mean, I, I'm sorry.
Councilmember Albert?
I was listening to Councilmember Peterson, I was looking at the original one again, and that whereas she was referring to really hasn't changed that much. I think the changes that Councilmember Sage has made to three and four, with the input from the Rochester Avon Historical Society, I'm comfortable with the changes we've made in the second whereas, with the advisory board named the legacy committee, and there... and therefore, number two, the, the city of Rochester values historical preservation. I think we're at a point where it encompasses the intent of our first one from two, from last meeting. It incur, it, it takes into effect some of the public comment we heard tonight. And like I, I think Mayor Protem, I support this version that, with those two minor changes that Councilmember Sage has put forward. So I'd like to go forward with...
Okay, so, thank you. So, Madam Clerk, so the motion on the floor is the one from last week?
Correct. So council could handle it several ways. You could make motions to amend, or you could take a vote on that original one, vote it down, and someone make a motion to adopt this one, that would be clean. Or City Attorney Crowe might have, he and I talked about this, there's a very numerous ways that you guys could handle this tonight, so maybe he would have some more.
Mr. City Attorney?
No, I, I, my personal preference would be to keep it clean, which is to just vote the original one down, and then have, if the council wants to have this news version, then it would just be a fresh motion to adopt this particular resolution as discussed, and, and we would put it together.
So, Councilmember Albrecht.
I was, can you just follow that direction?
Yeah, so, so, so we'll vote on the motion from last week right now. So is there discussion on that motion any further?
No, I have a comment to still go back on this one before it gets, the other one gets voted down or discussed.
Councilmember Peterson.
Right, so on the fourth whereas, on this redlined one, the difference between this one and the other one is this one says as much of the property's heritage as possible. And the other, the original one says as much of the historic value as possible. So there's a huge difference between the property's heritage and the property historical value of this. And changing it just to the property's heritage doesn't mean much if there's not a building there anymore. It's all about the historical value of what is there. It's, and that historical value is in the artifacts, it's the whole, it's the whole thing, and the historic value is also in what a community thinks. It's not just in a dollar amount. It's not just the heritage. It's not the heritage, that piece of property wasn't the heritage, it was the building and what it stood for in the community.
Which therefore are you referring to, Councilmember Peterson?
Whereas, the fourth whereas.
Oh, okay.
Oh, the fourth whereas, okay. Thank you. I, I wasn't with you. I wasn't with you either. I was in the item four.
I was there too, Mayor Protem.
No, I said the fourth whereas, yeah, that's fine. And I think that's where the title of the historical property preservation comes into play as well, because that is, it's, it's about the historical property preservation of where the historical value comes in. And historical all day long, it's not going to make a difference for anybody, as it's been stated. The minister, the people who, whoever does anything with this building still has to become, come before planning commission. They do their due diligence, they already know what they can and cannot do. And I do want to weigh on the side of making sure that the historical preservation is stated as one of the most important statements on this document, because that was what we talked about at the last meeting, and that is what the community cares about.
So you're proposing at the end, the fourth whereas, to end the sentence relocating and repurposing as much of the property's historical heritage as possible?
Correct.
Okay. I guess I would offer as well, the resolution with the amended title speaks directly to the action that will come...
Correct.
To the city. It's the sale of the building. And, and then contained within this resolution is our sentiment of what happens during that process.
Agreed.
Yeah, I think the title's appropriate.
And Councilmember Sage, if I may, Mayor?
Yep.
Uh, so, Mr. Zerman, did you run these things by her, of these changes that you made?
I spoke with her and emailed her twice.
And this would make the historical society happy?
I can't speak for that, for her opinion on that.
Happy is a relative term.
Well, I meant satisfied.
Nobody's happy. Okay, so, motion on the floor is the previous one from last week. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson.
No.
Salvia.
No.
Albrecht.
No.
Gould.
No.
Harrison.
No.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sage.
No.
Okay, now is there a motion? Councilmember Albrecht.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the resolution regarding the sale of Rochester Community Schools Administration Building on 501 West University Drive, using the document that is on the screen with the changes that we've talked about. The first change being whereas number three, it is the city of Rochester's understand that RCS is in the process of evaluating the RCS building while consulting with an advisory board named the Legacy Committee, period. The fourth whereas, whereas the city of Rochester considers the RCS building, the various artwork, murals, artifacts, and other components located where they're in to have a great historical significance, that that great care and thought should be into saving, relocating, and repurposing much of the property's historical heritage as possible, that change. And then therefore, number two, that the city of Rochester values historical preservation and places great historical significance on the RCS building and the historical items located therein. With those changes, I'd like to make a motion to present this resolution for adoption.
Motion by Councilmember Albrecht. Support. Support by Councilmember Sage. Further discussion. Councilmember Peterson.
So is it, number one, says that Rochester City Council values its relationship with the school district? Is it just the city or does it the city council? I'm just seeing how it's saying the city and then the city council, when we're going back and forth on this resolution, and I'm not sure that, you know...
I, I think you could say both, the Rochester City Council and city. But, I mean, we were talking about two, when this was done, it was the two councils basically interacting.
What, two councils?
The, the school board and our city council.
Because I think overall, the city values its relationship with the school district more than the city of, the city council does. It's the city that, we're, we're speaking on behalf of the residents, so to me, it should be the city. The city that the city and Rochester City Council values it, so it's, it's both. It's not just the council, is, we're not the ones who are doing this, we're doing this for the city, the city as an overall. Because we go back and forth that, you know, then we have the city of Rochester values. This is why I don't like doing these things on the fly like this. And I would prefer to see it all formally typed up and given back to us.
So I, I, I like Councilmember Peterson's idea there. So why don't we just change every one of the therefor's to include both the city of Rochester and the Rochester City Council? So it cleans every one of these items up.
Agreed.
Thank you, Council Sage.
Does it make her the motion? I'm comfortable with that change.
Councilmember Sage, you good with that?
I'm good.
Okay. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
And Sage.
Yes.
Very good. Thank you, thank you, council. Thank you to everybody who came to the meeting. Thank you for everybody who participated. I think that was a excellent exercise in listening to the community, taking time to think about things, trying to take the high road when we can, and then also protecting our values of our city. So thank you to everybody.
You're good.
Thank you, Councilmember Sage, for taking the lead on this.
Yes. Thank you, Councilmember Sage, you have time on your hands. I like that.
No, he has a passion for historical, like we...
That, that too.
Yes, so...
So, moving on to legislative deliberations, not saying this isn't important, but a consideration of a recommendation from the Tree Committee to review and approve the resolution to declare Friday, April 22nd, 2022 Arbor Day in the city of Rochester. Councilmember Albrecht.
I'd like to make a motion to approve this, and I just wanted to clarify a couple things. The motion, the resolution in your package says that Rochester's been a tree city USA for seven consecutive years, which was the same whereas that was in last year's Arbor Day. The reason it doesn't say eight consecutive years, because we haven't received the official response, which we will before this comes out, and we are highly confident that we will be for eight consecutive years. So I just wanted to make sure people knew that that would probably, that, that whereas would be changed between now and Arbor Day on the 22nd.
Would we need to amend the resolution? We can approve it conditionally and then amend upon receipt?
Yeah, we can do that.
So I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution with the ability to change the whereas to eight consecutive years, once Deputy Manager Banda receives approval from the Arbor Day Foundation of our designation as a tree city for eight, for this year.
Support by Councilmember Albrecht, support by Councilmember Gould, discussion? Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Thank you. Now onto reports and regular business, is a mayoral appointment to the principal shopping district. I'd like to appoint Donna Burgoyne and Jill Lutz to the PSD, and we can choose to go forward with that today, or we can do it at the next meeting.
Motion to approve tonight.
Motion by Councilmember Peterson. Support. Support by Councilmember Sage. Discussion. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Councilmember, Mayor Bixson.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Thank you. Next, we have a review of the quarterly report. Is that Mr. Maggio?
You're on mute.
I'm just, I'm slow on the trigger here. Nick's in charge of the, the mouse and keyboard right now. Yeah, be very, very afraid there, it'll be fine, though. Thank you, council. Yes, Brian, can I get a share permissions, please? All right, you're all set. Awesome, thank you. I will... All right, on the screen here, okay, cool. I'll make this brief, there's nothing super exciting, although quarterly reports are obviously very exciting. But to give everyone the regular update of where we're at, specifically with COVID, as you keep tally on what's going on, net effect of the city as of the end, 12/31, for the end of this quarter, two, and fiscal year end '22, we are currently at the minus 222,926. We still have a few outstanding grants that I am still in process of for the reimbursement, but that is where we're at right now, and we have collected to date the monies from various programs in the amount of $1.8 million, which is a collaborative effort across all of the staff. A couple other quick things to hit on the amendments, just the one change for parking fund, with the, the rate change being effective February 1st, we have the budget change there for the rest of the balance of this year's effect. Everything is pretty much on course. We still have some projects and, and revenue that's not, not cyclical, it'll be on, you know, not spread throughout the year evenly, so we see some ups and downs, such as in general fund with the tax revenue being collected upfront as we spend throughout the year. Investments continue to be interesting at best, and right now, we're getting about 0.6% on about one year out right now. We're still in process with Sage getting the account set up. We're almost complete, one last check item to do with the banking, and then we'll be set to get that going, but we're still sitting in, in some fairly good shapes there. Just a couple things to note, if you see some of the monitoring, the EMPP judgment, that is, ended up being a swap to the property tax revenues, so revenues on property taxes were higher, the local community stabilization was lower, we still netted about $130,000 to the positive between that. There is, in the departments, we just have some timing differences for the wage study, and nothing, everything's looking very good and on track there. We're still watching on the parking fund. It has still maintained even through December at being currently 9.9% down, so we are still bouncing between the 9% and 11%, and, and we're, we're right at 10% still. There hasn't been any changes as far as, as that goes. You know, with that, I will leave any questions that council might have on the report or want any other info on, otherwise, I am all set.
Mayor Protem Salvia.
Thank you, thank you, Anthony, Finance Director, excellent presentation. Thank you for commenting on the status of the Morgan Stanley Sage short-term bonds. As interest rates do start to go up, I think the timing will work out very well to put that money to work, and hopefully, the city can earn more than 0.1% on $22 million. So that should hopefully help our budget, and I would make a motion to approve as presented.
Support.
Motion by the Mayor Protem, support by Councilmember Peterson. Further discussion, Councilmember Albrecht.
I had one question for Anthony, or it might be Nick. On the slide where it said the wage compensation study, payment timing, I know with city manager out, at one of the meetings mentioned, we would be getting the results mid-January. Do you have an update if, if that study has been completed and when it would come before us?
Mr. Mayor, I may, I can chime in. I think Mr. Wayne got a preliminary review of the documents, got it out preliminarily to the department heads to look at. They needed to do some tweaking, so we are app, not apples to oranges on some of the categories, more oranges to oranges, if you will. And I believe he's shooting for mid-February to bring that forward in its completion.
Okay, I, I just would like to make it clear that, you know, we, we paid for the study, you know, that's, I'd like to, I'd like to see the data, like to be able to look at it and, and, and be able to go over that in, in advance of that meeting.
All right. I, I, I think there was some, I think there were, I, I think there were some COVID issues with the vendor that pushed it back a little bit.
Actually, there was, there was some health issues, yes, by main person, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Is there a motion on the floor?
There is, Your Honor.
Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Thank you. Next is a review of the year-end Tree Committee report. Councilmember Albrecht.
Well, it's really Nick Banda's report, but I guess I'm gonna, I'll do my Tree Committee meeting right now, and, and then we can kill two birds with one stone. We had our Tree Committee meeting on January 13th, and as Deputy Manager, City Manager Banda does every year, he gives a report on the trees. And again, we had a, a very productive meeting. We had set a goal for, you know, planting 100 trees and exceeded that. We had, oh, here we go. Through, through a couple programs, the city's street planning program, and the private sectors cooperation in the tree bait program, a total of 142 new trees were planted for the calendar year. We are, we had, had one issue come before our Tree Committee about replacement trees, which will be planted in Howlett Park in spring of 2022. He goes over the number of permits he's issued versus the year before. And then we've talked about some other things that are going to be going forward, or things that were, were being, were done, excuse me, where we planted memorial trees in the Butterfly Garden, where we had our Arbor Day celebration last...
we had our Arbor Days, uh, celebration last year, and planted a couple trees in the Mount Avon Cemetery that are still alive, which, uh, was cut, touch and go for a while, but, uh, Nick and the DPW worked their magic, and then the great news is that we've talked about the community garden, and, um, we are, have set aside monies, uh, to plant twenty-five to thirty native sugar maples, uh, Nick's also looking at park benches there to make that a real great, uh, community garden with additional, uh, uh, garden spaces, and, um, we brought a new topic before the committee, which is not a new topic to the committee, but we wanted to refresh it, which was, um, planting trees along Letica, south from Parkdale on the west side of the str- street, you know, this Tree Committee has taken on, uh, you know, we, we wanna increase our tree canopy, uh, I had reported earlier that for an urban city, we're considered an urban city by the, the company that did this, thirty percent of our city is covered by trees, which was a very high number, so adding more trees along Letica is just continuing to promulgate a great message that we want to make things better for, um, uh, our, our future generations with trees. We are gonna reintroduce the tree bait program in two thousand twenty-two to hopefully get more people, we'll probably put it in the spring issue of the, uh, our newsletter, and also, uh, do some press around that, so, um, I think that covers most of it, Nick, if I missed anything, please jump in there.
All right, uh, you, you did great, and, uh, we're excited about programs that we met our goal, already had somebody start for a tree bait request already for the next year, so, um, good job, and I think you hit the report exactly correct, and anybody has any questions on the detail, they can always call me.
Councilmember Peterson.
Yes, thank you, um, I'm just wanting to note publicly that we did take down three hundred and fifty-three trees, so, um, and I do have a comment, I did bring it up to, uh, City Manager Wang regarding, um, the planting of the trees along Letica, um, I feel that that's not a very good idea at this moment, if they're going to be planted along the area where the development is supposed to go in, because they had a whole entire tree planned to go, um, and preserve a lot of that land around there and plant, so I'm not sure where that development is at this point in time, um, but I'd hate to see us put in trees that would have to then be taken down or in the right of way of development.
Mayor, I can clarify that, it's on the Village Green side, she would be right if it was on the Overlook side, it's on the Village Green side, where there's a big gap there, and they would be in perpetuity, so, I, I didn't know that you talked to Mr. Wang about that, but, no, we wouldn't put them on the east side, they would be on the west side.
And Councilmember Peterson, that, that's an excellent point that came up in, in our committee, that we, we wouldn't want to plant trees that get taken down in three years for development, so.
So I, and that's why I would just like a little more clarity then in some of these reports, so we know like what side of Letica Road, so it's not like, cause to me, you would plant them where it's barren, right, you're not gonna plant them on the side where there are trees along some parts of Letica, so.
Again, we haven't approved that yet, that's just one of our plans for two thousand twenty-two, so, but thanks for your comments.
Okay, any further questions? Okay, thank you. Next, on to a review of the Economic and Community Development Director's Economic Development Outlook Report, which is a long way of saying what's going on in the city, Nick.
Absolutely. So again, I, I appreciate the opportunity, and I see what time it is, and I know we wanna get to our SWAT thing, so what I tried, I did, in our, in the, in your agenda, is a breakdown of the completed projects and developments, what I did was I went through Main Street University, Citywide, um, and talked about the things that have been done in the last year or year and a half during COVID, basically, I went from north to south along Main Street, and then same thing for University and Citywide, so, what I did was I gave you the name of the property, the address, and then a little sense about what was going on, so it's pretty much self-explanatory, I mean, I could go over any of them in detail and take an hour, but, um, a couple significant ones, if you might, that I know people have asked about before, things like the Spartan Inn at the north end of town, uh, it's, it's been rumored to be sold four times, it actually sold one time, the gentleman that bought it is a, a construction management company and a builder, he was going to flip it immediately for an additional million dollar profit, that did not work out, he is going to just simply renovate the units to keep it a motel, possibly to make two units on the top into one unit, put all new amenities inside of it, I've been working with the police chief and this new builder to let him know that we're very concerned with clientele there, he's doing his best to monitor that as we speak, but, uh, as a new owner, he decided to keep it and renovate it. All the other items, especially on Main Street, it's glad to see Christie and I talk a lot about whenever we see a vacancy, that could get you concerned, but for us, it's an opportunity to diversify our retail base, we've had some really good investments, if you look at what's happened, some expansions, some through retention, and then an expansion or redo of the facilities, um, or actually new tenants going into existing space, a, a good example is the Three Dog Bakery turned into La Macaron, which is a national tenant, um, and David, the owner, executive from GM retired, decided he wanted to do something on his own, he's running that, the, the, uh, match of partnership between, uh, Blake's, um, Orchards and the Cupcake Station, and you saw what they did to renovate that whole area, the, the old building down there now, Bakehouse Forty-Six, um, lettuce to go over for the Detroit Deli, so, we lose one, but we gain one, it seems like we always gain, even stronger retail, which we're excited about. Our churches and schools in town have made significant improvements in their property in the last little bit, we've had people like Final Touch take over the whole modern jewelry space on University, and then Modern Jewelry downsized and went into the Main Street Plaza, which also was purchased by a new prop owner, we did not lose, 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 lose the shoe, I was very excited about that, his wife, he wanted to move closer to his hometown, which is owned by Shelby, his wife said, nope, you're staying in town, he went over to where Scarborough Square was, kept his place there and got a new facility, so we're excited about that. You all know, we finished our DPW complex, um, the Lux Spa folks moved into the former Lenore Building, um, uh, as we talked about a little bit, the public schools have purchased the old Letica Corporation Building, Letica kept the balance of the land, so they still own all the vacant land around it, and one billable site to the south end, but the schools bought the actual building itself, and I talked about the churches, Dillman and Upton was purchased, uh, by Man Lumber, but they became a subsidiary, so Man's gonna keep it as Dillman and Upton, a subsidiary, subsidiary of Man Lumber, which is a, a big, uh, group out of Canton, Michigan, and we're excited to have that happen, um, little things like the Little Bed and Breakfast that we rezoned a few years ago, is going back to a single-family, um, household that has just got their permits last week, uh, Chief Financial, you see the major renovation and expansion going on there, that was a partnership between us and Rochester Hills, we're together with us taking the lead on that, the Pine Street mixed condominiums, all three condos are sold, the office condos are sold, they're looking for occupation of that in the next couple of months, Dr. Itala's building on University, converting the upper floor and the lower floor to twenty-six apartments will be great, cause we'll have more boots on the ground, people that can literally walk to downtown, they have their own parking on the site, health recipes, restaurant, et cetera, so that's exciting. Uh, Pfizer and Par, both will be undergoing, uh, significant improvements to their properties this summer, um, and then the Riverview Apartments that we approved through the Plan Commission after three years, Mr. Randazzo is just about finished with his Clomar and Lomar, which is a engineering term to, when you're working in the floodplain, they have to do that before they can get a permit to actually move earth, so he is working with that, he's actually trying to get a grant from the state for a loan to help clean up the dirty land, but he's gonna move forward no matter what, hope to see a summer, uh, construction project with that, planning projects significantly, starting in February, the mayor, Mr. Sage, Councilman Sage, will see at the Plan Commission, the Riverside Complex, which is the former cement plant, and Van Horns were purchased by Mr. Lachirko and his partner, they're looking at an apartment complex, four-story buildings there with townhomes, Forest Ridge Apartments are trying to put carports to continue their final phase of renovating that property, um, they've done a great job of the tenant base there, and they'd like to compete with the other places in town that do have carports, um, then a, hopefully good news, the purchaser has come to an agreement with One Twenty South Main, which is the former collision shop, and very possibly the cleaners come in with a property that would be residential, and it would meet all ordinance requirements by staying at three stories, so it won't have to be necessary, that's special project, et cetera, so that can be really good news coming up, and then, uh, Councilwoman Peterson mentioned the, the Overlook side, the Overlook condominiums that were south of OPC, they put the project out to bed, three walls, came in at four hundred and fifty dollars a square foot, they let their site plan lapse, it's just, at this time, it's too expensive to move forward, Milltown's had their site plan lapse a long time ago, um, Blossom Mills hasn't indicated if they're going to ever, and when move forward with a six-story apartment building at the corner of Elizabeth, and second, the two hundred, uh, ten diversion condo development, same thing came in, ten million over budget, and they never really got formal approval, they were going through the process, so, um, and we have, lastly, Soul Ronics has still gone through seven different iterations of people, three that have gone to the Plan Commission to make presentations, and still not a firm offer on that, so overall, we're doing great, the vacancy rate's still only three percent, um, and it looks like the future is bright, we've got some good projects potentially coming in, and we'll keep the Plan Commission busy.
Thank you.
Any questions, Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Banda, any questions? I just, I'd just like to say, I know it's private property, but as a resident of Terry Street, it's very disappointing to hear about the Spartan, hoping for some kind of development there, so, we can still hope, or hope, I do, hope the new builder does a better job.
Sold for a pretty penny, so, yeah.
So.
Okay.
Um, okay, next is a request to accept a liquor license application from BCJL Rochester Acquisition LLC in the west of Main Street for Penny Black, and to set a public hearing for February fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Still moved.
Support.
Motion by Councilmember Peterson, support by Mayor Protem, Mr. Police Chief, did you wanna say something?
Uh, no, if that needed.
Well, it's good to see you, though.
Yes, thank you.
Yes.
Um, Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Well, the police chief's here, I just wanted to thank him and Mr. Anthony for shoveling the walk for all of us before our meeting, so thank you very, very much.
You're welcome.
I was about to do it, but, just kidding. Uh, next, receiver report from the various boards and commissions, uh, receiver report from the City Beautiful Commission, Councilmember Harrison.
Thank you, so we approved our, our meeting schedule for two thousand twenty-two, the Rochester Pollinators are staying very busy, June fourth and eleventh, we will be, have a presence at the farmer's market selling native plant species, we've also established a seed library at Dinosaur Hill, and we're working with a local high school student to establish a garden at Adams High School, so that is really inspiring, that high schoolers are getting involved in the native plant initiative, we are, we started talking about our goals and objectives, but we'll have that official meeting at the following February's meeting, uh, but we're just starting to talk a little bit about doing some more hands-on projects, like a cattail volunteer cleanup, possibly another native plant garden at Borden Park, uh, there are currently plans in the works for a native plant garden in the cemetery, and that's being and done with partnership of the Daughters of the American Revolution, and we are also talking about potentially doing another mural for the following fiscal year, considering if the one that we're working on now goes well, we've actually raised, um, one thousand seven hundred and forty-two dollars for that mural, we have two hundred and fifty-seven dollars and fifty cents left to raise, if anyone wants to make a donation, I'm just kidding, I think our pollinator committee's going to finish the fundraising portion of that, we talked about more fundraising opportunities, too, and what we wanna do in the coming year, we talked about doing a popcorn fundraiser, and we've also decided to do the dog wash again, because we all had so much fun with that last year, so those are the plans that we have in the works, and more discussion will follow with that February meeting.
Very good, thank you. Uh, next, receiver report from the Pink Creek Trailway Commission, Councilmember Sage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, Councilmember Harrison mentioned June fourth as a day that the Pollinators will be celebrating, uh, down at the farmer's market, it is also National Trails Day, um, that day, and the Friends of the Pink Creek Trail will be doing, uh, an event called Tour de Trail, which, uh, is a bike and walk, uh, event, but it also is gonna include this year a passport, um, encouraging people that participate in this event to go to businesses along the municipalities on the trail, so I'm gonna do a warm introduction for the, uh, the Friends of the Pink Creek Trail and the DDA, um, to identify some businesses here in town, uh, that, uh, we could put on that passport, so, the trails always initiates in Lake Orion on that day, the Labor Day Bridgewater always initiates down here in Rochester, so that's how we trade off, uh, at both ends of the trail, um, to recognize those two times during the year, um, and also to, uh, add some, uh, insight to the Dillman Upton, uh, update that, uh, City Manager, Assistant City Manager Banda, uh, we have a license agreement for part of the land, uh, with Dillman and Upton, so now, as Man's Lumber has purchased the assets of Dillman and Upton, and Dillman and Upton retains the building and property, leases it back to Man's, so we will enter into a new lease agreement or license agreement with Upton Leasing, so that they can use that, uh, piece of the trail, the property, and that's it.
Very good, thank you. Uh, we received the Tree Committee Report, now is the report from the Rochester Ivan Recreation Authority, Ra-Ra, Councilmember Albrecht.
Thank you, Mayor, uh, we had to move our meeting from January twelfth to January nineteenth, be, based on some COVID issues, so, um, we had our meeting on the nineteenth, uh, a couple of the high points were our program, uh, registrations, um, knowing that two thousand twenty was a COVID year, uh, more than doubled from three hundred, three thousand six hundred and forty-eight to eight thousand six hundred and twenty-two, and as we enter into two thousand twenty-two, we're tracking at twenty nineteen numbers, pre-COVID numbers, so, again, three weeks into the, into the year, so we're, we're optimistic that we'll increase where we're at this year, uh, for, for where we were the, last year to this year. Our year end, uh, is the calendar year, our unaudited, uh, balance was, uh, three hundred thousand dollars, roughly around three hundred thousand dollars to the good, however, once we, we have, uh, pay some other bills and other things that we're not in the audited, when we have it audited, we're anticipating we'll have a hundred thousand dollar, uh, plus for Ra-Ra for this year. We had our election of officers, uh, we re-elected Chairman John Mink, I stayed on as vice-chair, and Councilmember Teresa Mangioli from Rochester Hills, uh, stayed on as, uh, the secretary. We, uh, authorized at a prior board meeting the hiring of a couple new positions to try to get back to the staffing we had pre-COVID, so we've hired one person, and, uh, we are currently interviewing for the second. In the City Manager Report, um, uh, we, we put an update, uh, regarding, and I'm just gonna read a couple lines, one of the business terms that rents based from Ra-Ra has failed to pay rent for several months after meeting with the tenant, trying to work on a plan, the tenant stopped communicating with Ra-Ra despite numerous attempts to address payment issues with AFS, Ra-Ra has not received payment that is consistent with the signed agreement. On January eighteenth, our legal counsel submitted a demand for a position to AFS for payment, this is the first step in the legal process, et cetera, et cetera, so, uh, again, a couple meetings ago, I had mentioned the video that, um, AFS had put out, we attempted, we've not attempted, we met with them three times, we formed a committee, um, but, uh, they've gone radio silent, so, um, we're just, we've turned it over to the attorneys, and, uh, that's about it.
Very good. Um, I'd just like to say that the DDA meeting, that we were gonna have goals and objectives, got canceled for COVID reasons, so that's gonna take place in February. Before we go to new business, refer on miscellaneous, um, I know it's getting late, and I'm throwing out the idea of pushing the SWAT thing to the next meeting, just for conversation.
Monday's meeting with the master plan?
Uh, the next council meeting?
Oh.
And that, and that would, well, or...
Do we have time before, I thought they needed the input, I thought administration needed the input.
I thought administration needed the input.
I guess.
Anthony?
Mayor?
Yes.
Oh, Mayor, just so all of council knows, and we're going to talk about this later, in front of you at each of your stations is the current SWAT with all of the feedback. We did receive feedback from council, and we did update those sheets. So if there, if there wasn't any further discussion, I mean, we were just looking to really to get the ranking done tonight. So just make sure council knows it's all there and set to go. You could even rank it now if you wanted, but.
Okay, so do we want to do that? Or I mean, I guess, I guess I thought we were going to have discussion as well among the council. So I just threw that out for consideration?
I'm fine to stay.
Stay?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Onto new business referral and miscellaneous. Is there further public comment? Jessica, did you want to? One more?
Thank you again, Mayor Bixson and council. I figured it's been a long time, so might as well take my opportunity to speak a couple of things related to other agenda items. I did want to mention, Councilperson Harrison, if there is ever anything to do with Howlett Park related with the City Beautiful Commission, please reach out to me. I'm sort of the unofficial protector of that park. A number of years ago, I actually received an award with my friend Nina Ignazik for our work, and she, of course, has moved across the road, so she doesn't, across Rochester Road, so she doesn't live right by the park anymore. But I still walk there every single day and document it very carefully. So I would love to be included in anything that has to do with that park.
Great. I think, Leanne, do we know, is there any openings on City Beautiful Commission still?
I don't know offhand.
I believe we're still looking for members, too, just shameless plug there. But please do send me an email so I have your contact information.
At least, yeah, yeah. I don't know if I can contribute at that level at this point, but I definitely. Specifically, if it has to do with Howlett Park, I'm there.
Okay. I'll give you my card.
Thank you. I do also want to speak on the Tree Committee Report. I know that Mr. Banda and I think Mayor Bixson and I have talked about tree preservation in the past. I have been outspoken about that in a few letters that I've submitted. I recognize wholeheartedly that we've got a lot of silver maples in this community that are not healthy. They happen to be in my neighborhood, in our neighborhood, and it's, it's really unfortunate whenever we see one of those trees come down because they do contribute the vast majority of the tree canopy to our, to our streets in that sort of North Hill neighborhood. You know, they were planted there because they were fast-growing, but unfortunately, they now are dropping limbs and they threaten people's homes. But we also see a lot of them come down just for the sake of redevelopment, of new houses being constructed. And I've seen that happen far too many times where we've lost trees for the purpose of a new house being constructed. I come from California where people build around the trees. They do not cut them down for the most part, obviously, not every, that's a blanket statement. But I would really, really like to see the community continue to recognize that while we do have to take down those trees when they are endangering the public, endangering a home, I've seen them come down before, believe me, we should just take care in remembering that the canopy is there. It's part of our local character. It's part of why we love living in Rochester. Those tree-lined streets are, are trademark. So we really need to work on how do we restore what we lose and how do we plant additional trees in those places where they've been lost, trees that are going to not be deadly, stronger maples, you know, oaks, that sort of thing. I know that's, that's all being discussed behind the scenes, but for us as residents, when we see a tree come down and it's because a house is being constructed, it can be very frustrating. So I wanted to speak on that as well. I think that's it for my comments.
Thank you for coming out on a cold night. Brian, is there any further?
I have not seen any.
Okay, thank you. Next is a receipt of the check register report and the City Manager Update. Mr. Banda.
Billy, there's two check registers for your review in your packets this evening. Do you want me to keep going? Mr. Wee, you just left a couple of notes.
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Banda.
Yep, and he just had to remind everybody that was just alluded to the special meeting to discuss the master plan next Monday at 7:00 PM. And then we sent out a press release that on January, it was issued on the eighteenth, and on February first, the parking rates go from a dollar to a dollar and a quarter at metered spaces, and that's it.
Very good, and thank you for filling in for the City Manager, Mr. Albrecht.
Is it seven PM or six?
Six PM.
Six PM, I'm sorry.
I had six PM in mind, okay. I know we talked about that last time, so.
Yeah, we are all conditioned to seven.
Yeah.
It's going to be difficult. Madam Clerk?
Nothing this evening, Your Honor.
Mr. City Attorney?
Nothing, thank you.
Councilmember Gould?
Nothing, thank you.
Councilmember Albrecht?
In your packets, Ra-Ra is having their scamp bowling fundraiser. I put that all over social media. This fundraiser benefits a summer camp for children, young adults with special needs in the greater Rochester area. We weren't able to have it last year because of COVID. It's Saturday, February fifth, from eight-thirty to eleven-thirty for $25. Get three games of bowling, shoe ball rental, pizza and pop. There's drawings for prizes throughout the night. It's really a fun, fun event. So I know the City Manager put it on, in our packet, so I just wanted to make sure the public knows about that. It's, we really need the funds to make sure this camp becomes a reality for the people with special needs in our community. Thank you.
Mayor Protem Salvia?
Yeah, thank you. So the Grant Committee met January eighteenth, waiting to distribute the presentation to council through the City Manager. He wanted to add some additional comments regarding the National League of Cities and the Grant Database that we're going to have access to, or actually, we do have access to currently. Also wanted to let the public know that in the winter newsletter, we talked about that, what is this called? The Service Line Warranty Program. So this is the, I'm going to call it seven dollars a month, that you can insure your sewer line is now up and running. We signed up, so there is a thirty-day elimination period. So you sign up, and then thirty days later, you can call for service. So if you think you're interested, I would recommend you do it sooner than later. And then lastly, question for Economic Development Director or Nick. Right before the meeting, we received this email that Oakland County is going to be reviewing our master plan revision. So who, who attends that meeting?
They are actually consultants, so they send out their report. Actually, they have three good comments on our report. Gave that to Beckett and Rader, and then Michelle will go just to hear. They're just going to reiterate and accept the report officially. They have to do that. So I have another meeting that night, so I couldn't make it, but Michelle's going to go for Beckett and Rader.
Okay, no one from Planning Commission goes?
No, no, it's just, it's a formality, so.
Okay.
They read the report, they, nobody asked to come, but I thought she should be there and answer any questions as she wrote the actual document.
Okay, thank you.
I think that meeting's on Wednesday at nine AM.
It's nine AM, yeah.
Councilmember Sage?
Nothing this evening, sir.
Councilmember Harrison?
Nothing for me this evening.
Councilmember Peterson?
Just going to say thank you to the DPW and everybody for working so hard to clear the roads and ask the mayor and city manager to please at least let us know when you'll be meeting with anyone in the future if it pertains to something controversial. An email from, an email from the City Manager would have been sufficient to say, hey, we're going to be meeting. I think that would have been better than getting surprised. Thank you.
And I would just like to say for the ice sculptures and the fireworks, I thought that was a great success, and I really appreciate the businesses stepping up to paint for those fireworks at the last minute. And that was a really good event, and it was cold and it felt like Winterfest and stuff, so that was very good. So that's all I have. Madam Clerk, do we just continue on with our meeting now and just go to the SWAT thing?
That's at your discretion, Your Honor. You can do that. You can adjourn, start up another.
Just keep going?
Keep going.
Okay, we'll keep going.
Although if you don't mind, I think I will exit.
Goodbye.
I think you have a long drive in front of you.
You do have a long drive.
Good night, thank you for your help. Mr. Anthony?
Thank you, Mayor. I am going to grab.
Hold on one second, Anthony. Is this to be recorded? I think not. Mr. City Attorney, before you leave? Just be recorded?
I don't know what the expectation was.
We didn't record it last year.
There's no requirement to have it.
Okay, so we will not, we will not record this.
Yeah, correct.
Yeah.
Motion to adjourn.
I just think.
No, no, you keep the meeting because you have to have an open meeting.
Correct, we're all here.
So you don't adjourn.
Yeah, you can adjourn.
You wouldn't adjourn the meeting, you're just choosing to go offline at this point.
Right.